Is 5:07 PM. It is Tuesday, January 21st. I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Sheil.
Here.
Rizzo.
Here.
Vialobos.
Here.
Tenorio.
Present.
All members present, we have a quorum at this time, citizen comments period. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Next up, executive session.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071; golf course agreement; Kinder Morgan lawsuit update; TDS contract; veterans memorial; police department facility update; Uptown Park. Convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city; Project Wild Blue; Project Indigo.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, that we reconvene from executive session. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio, that we adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. We are adjourned. Now, we're going to take up our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Good evening. The time is 7:11 PM. It is Tuesday, January 21st. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Sheil.
Here.
Rizzo.
Here.
Vialobos.
Here.
Tenorio.
Present.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to have a citizen comment period for the first 11 items. After those items, we'll undertake the rest of our business, and we'll have a formal citizen comments period for that portion of the meeting. So if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on the first 11 items, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on those items? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. Next up is considering possible action. This is a very special time for us. We've been working very hard to present a series of items to the public that embody and represent a lot of the values of our community and the strategic and forward-thinking initiatives of the staff and the city council. I'm going to recommend that we consider all of these items at the same time because many of these items are very interrelated and connected, and do the very best I can to try and explain all of these items and then allow for the council to really provide the context for how they've been involved in these items and more specifically, with more specificity what these items entail. So bear with me. I'm going to read out by law 10 items, so this will be fun. Agenda item number one, First Amendment to the Agreement with Texas Disposal Systems for Solid Waste and Refuge Collection and Disposal Services. Agenda item number two, Agreement with Texas Disposal Systems for Solid Waste and Refuge Collection and Disposal Services. Agenda item number three, Texas Disposal Systems Heroes Memorial Park Contract. Agenda item number four, Agreement Regarding Confirmation of Right to Construct Heroes Memorial on That Certain Tract of Land Located at Northwest Corner of Colish Crossing in FM 1626. Agenda item number five, Approved Nudge Design as the Landscape Architect for the Heroes Memorial Park and Direct Staff to Bring Back a Scope of Services and Budget at the February 4th Council Meeting. Agenda item number six, Park and Cultural Trail Design and Permitting Agreement with MG Cardinal at Uptown LLC. Agenda item number seven, Land Dedication Agreement with Plum Creek Development Partners, LTD, and Mountain Plum and Plum Creek Partners. Agenda item number eight, Agreement with Plum Creek Development Partners, LTD, for conditions to construct, construction of infrastructure for Plum Creek land. Agenda item number nine, Police Headquarters Agreement between Owners, City of Kyle and Architect P.Gal Incorporated. And agenda item number 10, Direct Staff to Issue a Request for Proposal, for Public Relations Firm to Lead the Campaign for the November 2020 General Obligation Bond for a New Police Headquarters in Heroes Memorial Park. All right. That's a lot. Thank you all for coming. This may be a record-setting crowd. There have been a few times in the past, I think, where we've had a line close to being out the door, but generally, that was over various projects like our truck stop zoning that, if you'll recall, was extremely controversial. This agenda item, and in particular, the ceremony to follow, is anything but controversial because it represents the best of what can be accomplished through a public-private partnership and a consideration of council and community values. So I'm going to try to go through how all of these items are interconnected, but the first thing that I want to do is give a brief explanation and analysis of the new Texas Disposal Systems contract for solid waste services that we are bringing forward tonight. It's my, it's my pleasure to announce that after a lot of negotiations, in part by some of the, some of us on council, and by the forward-thinking of Councilmember Tenorio to bring this item forward several months ago and kickstart these negotiations, as well as working with representatives from Texas Disposal Systems, we were able to not only negotiate a contract that increased the scope of services offered to each and every resident in our community, but also lower the service rates, as well as lower the annual incremental increase in those service rates from a percentage of around 4% annually to 2.5%. So the current contract rate would be, in the month that this takes place, $22.14 under the new agreement, as opposed to $22.97 under the agreement that we have been under for the last 10 years. And the annual rate increase, as I said, will be 2.5% starting in April 2020, and will increase at that rate every year instead of what was slightly over 4% annually every single year. We can go to the next slide, please. Keep going. Thank you. Where's the one with the bullets that talks about the different things that, is this it? Oh, the first, the first bullet also includes an increase of the annual number of curbside bulky call-in services available to residential customers from one time per calendar year to two times per calendar year. And up to 10 roll-off halls per calendar year for our citywide community cleanup included. We also have a one-time per month free landfill disposal, up to five cubic yards for residential customers, which, if you're like me, is something that would be very valuable to a lot of us, meaning you'll be able to actually take up to five cubic yards of trash to the dump as a part of being a Texas Disposal's customer in the city of Kyle. This also will include free Christmas tree collection. So for those of our residents who purchase a live Christmas tree every year, Texas Disposal Systems will now pick that Christmas tree up off your curb for no charge in the month of January. There's a Waste Wizard app that has been rolled out and is now available, will now be made available to all of our Kyle residents, which will give lots of different notifications and updates for our customers. And we will have a third cart service, a green cart, will be expanded to include up to 10 craft leaf bags for compostable leaves and brush to be collected on the same day as the green waste service. And TDS will provide up to four restroom trailers and trash collection, up to 80 cubic yards generated by the Pie in the Sky Festival. Not only is Texas Disposal System partnering with us in terms of increasing service to our residents, they are also going to be providing complementary services for several of our marquee events, which is very much appreciated. They will be providing conservation and recycling education during the Pie in the Sky Festival. They'll provide two roll-off dumpsters for the creek cleanup twice per year for the Keep Kyle Beautiful event. They will provide conservation and educational booth twice per year on, at market days. They will provide an 18-gallon in-house recycling bin to all residential customers who request it. So if you want to have a recycling bin in your house, you will be able to request and have that provided to you as a part of this contract. The contractor will work with the city to improve Plum Creek by providing compost and other materials, up to a maximum of 250 cubic yards per calendar year, which is a tributary that we care greatly about. And our contractor will provide restroom trailers and trash collection services, up to 80 cubic yards, for an additional spring festival to be designated by the city. We have groups right now working within the city of Kyle to designate a second marquee event, and the Texas Disposal Systems has already agreed to be a sponsor in this capacity. All of these things with a lower rate. These are services that we have not been able to take part of up until this point, and so it's, it's very exciting that the new contract, which will last for essentially for 15 years, it's a 10-year contract with an automatic five-year extension, and then there will be an option for an additional five years thereafter, and that's something that we are, we are very excited to have these rates locked in for that period of time. Finally, it is our distinct honor to, to announce that Texas Disposal Systems has agreed to contribute $750,000 in cash and $750,000 in in-kind materials and design help for what we are calling tentatively Heroes Memorial Park, which is a park designed to honor our veterans and first responders, those who have fallen in service to our community. That park has been something that our residents and our veterans in particular have been working towards finding a way to materialize in our community for a very long time, and we have struggled to find a way to fund such a valuable facility. Texas Disposal Systems recognized that. The council recognized an opportunity in negotiating this contract, and they, everybody put their heads together to come up with a way to make that, to make that memorial happen. And this is, this is something that I'm very proud of the work that our council has put together and to call Texas Disposal Systems a partner, in particular because of their willingness to pull out their checkbook and make a, you know, a community dream come true. So I'd like to give you all a round of applause for that. Those are only the first three out of 10. The, the, the next section, agenda items number four, five, six, seven, and eight are all connected to Heroes Memorial Park, and that's a placeholder title until such a time as we get an opportunity to engage the community further on what specifically this memorial should look like. I'd like to point you to agenda item number five to start with. We have three members of this body, Councilmember Rizzo, Councilmember Vialobos, and Councilmember Ellison, who are a part of a Veterans Memorial Subcommittee, or we call it a steering committee. These three council members have been working very diligently behind the scenes to, to put together and interview companies that, and firms that can provide the type of services for designing a memorial park that is consistent with our values and our high standards. And Nudge Design is the group that they have brought forward, and I'm, we have a representative from Nudge who, momentarily, I'm going to ask to come and provide some additional elaboration on their vision and the way they intend to engage our veterans, engage our community to, to help put together a park that has as close to unanimous buy-in as possible for something that is so incredibly valuable. Texas Disposal Systems, however, is not, although they are going to be the primary sponsor of our Veterans Memorial, they are not the only one putting skin in the game to make this project happen. MoMark Development, and in particular, the owners that, in Plum Creek, have the land in and around the Uptown area are also committing to convey land for the new police station that we are going to elaborate on momentarily. That's five acres. They are going to convey and donate the land around the pond next to the PAC Center through a series of agreements so that we can construct a memorial park without having to purchase that land. They are donating 1.75 acres for an office building to be located in the Uptown area, and five acres for the police facility, 1.67 acres for a central park to be located in the center portion of Uptown, and 3.1 acres for a hotel and convention center. These land dedications, but in particular, the, the work of MoMark and to, to help put together an agreement that will allow for a facility like our memorial is something that cannot be understated. They are definitely putting skin in the game to elevate the, the standard of economic development in and around the greater Kyle area, giving our police department the ability to put the maximum amount of money that we have available into the design and construction of the facility, as opposed to into land. And so that is also something that we are very happy to see happen, and signifies just how great of a community partner that they have been. The other items, agenda item number four, six, and eight are related to technical documents that give the city of Kyle the right to design and construct the memorial, as well as the ability to design and construct the, the central park in Uptown and the streetscape that is between the memorial and the central park. Our, our idea, which is very preliminary at this point, and will, will be fleshed out as we work through the, and work with these architects and design groups, is to have the Veterans Memorial be absolutely the cornerstone of the Uptown area. So when you think of Uptown, you will think of our heroes. You will think of our veterans and those who have fallen in, in service to protect our community, and this is, this is fitting in my mind. There's nothing I would rather show off, or lift up, or demonstrate value to the outside world and to those who live here than such a, such a park. We intend for this to be something that turns your head, that draws you in, and that tells a story, a story of our heroes. It's very, it's a, it's a very exciting time to start this project. With that said, I know there are questions related to those items, but I'm going to also mention agenda item number nine and 10, which is the, the next element of kickstarting the project that tonight represents, and that is agenda item number nine, where we are naming P.Gal, the primary architect that built the police station in College Station and New Braunfels, to begin design work for a new 64,000-square-foot police headquarters to be located on the land that was donated in Plum Creek next to the RSI facility on that five acres. The, we also, besides the Veterans Subcommittee, we have a, a police station Subcommittee, and that, those members are Councilmember Vialobos, Councilmember Rizzo, and Councilmember Ellison. The, the, these three council members have been working along with another member of the committee who we named from our community, Mr. Mike Rubsum, and our police chief, and the various members of our police department to identify exactly what kind of facility that we think we can afford, and how to get that facility constructed in a timely and responsible manner. This particular contractor, who has done this work in College Station and New Braunfels, has a, has been working on a set of plans that our committee has identified as being very compatible with the, the vision of growth that we have, and in particular, the two studies that we commissioned for our police needs from an organizational standpoint, and an officer standpoint, and an administration standpoint, and the separate study with Brinkley Sargent that identified the type of space that we need to build in order to adequately accommodate our police department. It has been several years now of, since I have been serving on this city council where I have known that our police facilities were adequate, or were wholly inadequate for the growing police department that we have, and that we knew that the time needed to come, and it needed to come soon for us to, to build and construct a facility that our officers could call home for long, for, you know, for a generation. This facility represents that commitment, and it, we are going to begin the process now of designing and fitting that particular five acres with the plans, and we are going to begin the process of working with these two different groups to design these, the memorial and the, the police station. And we, we are intending to make sure that these particular projects are fully designed and bid before we would ever consider asking the public to, whether or not they would like to issue a bond to pay for them. And there are conversations, there have been conversations from this dais for years, and in the last year in particular, very many long discussions with the public about the nature of what that police station should be. We've gone through all kinds of models and various ideas. Some of those ideas have been very public, but at the end of the day, this is, this is the, the path that we have set before us that I believe has the greatest chance of, of being successful and the type of facility our police department deserves. There is a preliminary figure of $30 million that we have attached to the police department that is for the total cost of construction of that facility. That number is not a bid number. That number is a very crude and rough estimate of what we think it could cost, and there are several factors that we are working on to try to narrow down and identify exactly what kind of facility this will end up being and what those costs will be. But our commitment as a council is to go through the work of determining exactly what this project will be and exactly what it will cost through a public process, so that when this goes to bond, you can know that the amount that you are voting on is the amount, and the construction for the facility will be immediately following, should that bond be approved. The overall cost for the, this memorial is not something that we yet have determined because for quite some time, we've been seeking to identify a means of paying for the design of a memorial. We know for a fact that, that we want to engage the community in a very public process and our stakeholders to get more volunteers, to get more sponsors, to help pay for and own this facility jointly as a community. We have identified funding sources. We are thinking about total budget amounts that we might be looking at, but, and the, the memorial will really belong to the public, and the design of that facility will be something that I think we will do best to, will serve us all best if we do it one step at a time without exactly trying to figure out the end before we, you know, go, go along that journey. So while I know there are questions, and I'm about to turn this over to my colleagues to, to add to and elaborate on the various proposals and agenda items, as well as to fill in all of the gaps that I have missed, the, the, the key takeaway that I, that my hope the public receives from, from tonight's ceremony, as well as from tonight's council action, is not that we have every single thing figured out, but that we are working very hard to put together a, a series of projects that will have incredible benefits to our community from the standpoint of economic development, public safety, and in particular, honoring those who are, who have sacrificed everything so that we may have this freedom to pursue economic development and great jobs and a great community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues, and if there's anyone in particular that would like to elaborate on anything that I've said, after, after we go through this process, we are going to have a check presentation ceremony where, assuming the vote passes, where Texas Disposal Systems, and in particular, Mr. Gregory, the, the primary owner of Texas Disposal Systems, will be presenting the, the city of Kyle with a check for that memorial. Councilmember Rizzo.
First of all, I just want to start off by saying thank you to the other two members of the committee. I want to thank you for your hard work, for the time you spent on this project, trying to get it started. I want to thank the council as a whole. Mr. Mayor, thank you all for allowing us to, to really bring forward this project that's going to honor our veterans. When I first hit council, one of the things I heard is that we've been working on a Veterans Memorial forever, and my thinking was, let's stop doing that, and let's start acting. And after speaking to past council member David Wilson, to many of the veterans in the area, I, I saw that the support was here for it, and I, I'm glad that this council is being very aggressive and, and really making this come to fruition. But this is going to be a, a very special memorial, not just for our veterans, but for our first responders and for the community. It's going to give our veterans a sense of pride, and it's going to give our community a sense of pride, and that's something I think that our community is lacking a little bit. We, we want people to be able to come out and say, come to Kyle, this is a beautiful memorial they have out there. And I, I think that, I think we're in the right direction, and I, I think that this is going to be a beautiful memorial to our veterans and to our first responders.
Thank you. Councilmember Vialobos.
In talking, I mean, many years ago, and again, with Councilmember Wilson, and knowing his, his duty as, as, as a veteran as well, it was something that was near and dear to his heart. I'm a military brat. I've lived all over the world with my father, very honorably. And when we talk about a memorial, we also, in our ideas, in our conversations with representatives of the organizations, has looked at also incorporating an aspect that honors the entire family unit as well. As at many times, you will see that the family unit is what puts our veterans and our, and our heroes back together when they come home. So in taking that honor and understanding the sacrifice, in my own right of, of being in law enforcement and commanding first responders into very dangerous situations and doing some very dangerous things, is that you, you understand the situations that many people have to make decisions in very peculiar situations. So I, I've seen their faces, and I've seen their families, and I've seen the suffering. I've seen the after-effects of the stress of some of the, some of the first responders. I followed their, their bodies to their ultimate place and have spoken to their families. And with regards to this, that's what I'm taking with me when we are having discussions about designing something that honors every aspect of, of taking the full, or taking the sacrifice for something greater than themselves as an individual. So when we were interviewing organizations to do the design, the only one that came up with a, a creating with a, a creating something, but then also understanding the magnitude of, of having something very long-term, something that's going to last for a very long, long time, that well beyond all of us is going to be honored and enjoyed by, by many people. So it's part of a, so to speak, so part of a legacy, right? And the only one that was able to come up with that, that after effect was, you know, the maintenance after. Okay, we have, we have this beautiful thing that's honoring a lot of history and a lot of sacrifice, but then what about the maintenance after? And I think I look at it from a whole package and a lot of people are about building an object, but what's beyond the object? And what do you need to do to continue to keep it together, piece it back together, provide what it needs, the culture that it needs, the cultivation that it needs to, to bring it back up, to keep it in its right foot? And I believe in the discussions and what I heard and an organization that really works hands-on with their projects is that's something that was very special to me in that, yes, it's, it's, it's beyond getting there. And for a veteran and for a first responder, it, it's, it's along the same theme. You get there, but what happens after? And then once you clear the scene or once the incident or the conflict is over, then what happens after to the people? Not only the people that have affected by it, but the people that are in the middle of it and the people that had to do the work. So I'm very observant and I hear everything and I incorporate everything into the overall direction. And I feel like this opportunity to do this as a, as a, as a keystone, as a cornerstone for our city, it's beyond just getting there. It's, it's driving up to it. It's something that catches your eye and then when you're there, you don't want to leave. And then once you're, you're there and you're engaging and all the other opportunities for family and education and, and honoring what people have done to give us the opportunity to be there. So very, I appreciate the opportunity to doing that. I appreciate the people that give me this opportunity to be here and, and be a part of this. I can't thank you enough. And I think it's a lot of good work, a lot of great work by all of us up here, a lot of great support, and I appreciate that. I appreciate everyone that's given their input and there's still going to be plenty of time for a lot of input for this project. And we're going to need every bit of it to make sure that we're honoring every aspect of what people who make the ultimate sacrifice do. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stoyan.
So there's a couple of things, I've got several questions, but first I'm going to start off with the Gregor, Mr. and Mr. Gregory from TDS. So what I was telling them earlier is the very first time I ever went to TDS, I was a teenager. And TDS has always been a very big community sponsor. They've always been very supportive of their community. And I was a teenager and I went to an advanced event there with my mother who sat on the board. And it, I was, I mean, I was 15, 16, I was dazzled by this amazing facility. And then to be able to, Willie's been on the school board for 10 years now. Our children have gone to Fuentes Elementary School and that's important because Fuentes Elementary School was the first school in this county that offered a compost lesson. So each of our children were learning how to compost and eventually that rolled out to all of the other schools. So the reason that I bring that up is because for me, bringing forward this extension for this contract continued this wonderful partnership that TDS has, not just with the city of Kyle, but with all the aspects of our community, with our children and with us as homeowners. And so that was very, it was a very easy decision to make was to, hey, let's have this conversation and let's, let's continue this talks. And, and they showed one step further their commitment to our community by working with and sponsoring $1.5 million for this memorial. And so I want to say thank you again for this, this opportunity to continue a great relationship and another cornerstone to the community commitment that TDS has made, not just with our school districts and our children who are now learning how to take care of the planet through tools that were provided by TDS, but also by providing a good quality service at a good value. And so that's extremely important to me and I want to say thank you again for doing that. I'd also like to say thank you to councilmember Koch for working vigorously on the negotiations and I couldn't be more proud of the job that you did to facilitate that and I want you to know that. So I wanted to say thank you to TDS before I asked my questions. So that being said, thank you, TDS, and I, I can't thank you enough. I mean, I think that it's an important partnership and I really wish that, I wish that other vendors could see how committed a company can be without just thinking of a community as a cash, but to actually think of them as a partner and as a family. And that is one aspect of TDS that I, you know, I don't, most of you don't know, but my last meeting is February 4th and I will always take forward with me from thenceforth, that wonderful partnership and that wonderful love that I've always felt that I've gotten from TDS at all of the events that I've been blessed to attend at your facility, as well as the educational aspects that you have provided for future generations. So I want to say thank you for that. Okay, so I have a couple of questions for staff in regards to the scope of services that we are going to be doing for the memorial. Okay, as you know, I cannot support an item without a budget. And that's the reason that I will be voting no to item number five, because we have no $1.5 million would be the top for my construction costs on that event, for that, for that project, because that's donated money and that's already been allocated through TDS's generosity. Another question that I have for staff is, how are we going to determine who we are honoring? So that's another question I'd like to know because if we're only honoring veterans who have died in, in war, well, for Kyle, there's only one. Are we honoring veterans who have fought in combat? Are we honoring veterans who have fought overseas and not the veterans who supported? Are we honoring veterans who have, who have served but not during conflict times? So those are kind of the questions that I'd like to wrap my mind around. And I'd like to be able to have the input from the VFW brought forward so that we can say, okay, exactly who are we honoring? Then we've also added this aspect of heroes. How are we going to determine who a hero is? What are going to be the qualifications to assure that we're honoring everyone who deserves to be honored? So those are questions that I have in regards to that. Okay. Then I have a question in regards to item number 10. And item number 10 talks about the 2020 general obligation. And it talks about hiring a public relations firm to do the campaign for us. So I have two folds in that. The first fold is first, we haven't even decided if we're going to go out for a bond. And my question is, is should we be putting the cart before the horse? Because that's basically what we're doing. My second question is, when, and I cleared this through Paige and we talked about this with Scott, in regards to the amount of money that we have talked about adding to that bond of $2 million and allocating that to the memorial fund. So that takes it to $3.5 million. And that funds, those $2 million funds are taxpayer funds. So I have questions in regards to that. Then we also have been talking about utilizing $2.5 million from the potential funding from Kinder Morgan, which kind of worries me as well. So we're looking at a fund of $6 million right now that we're looking for this pool and I'm uncomfortable with that. And I, that's one of the reasons I want to talk about setting that budget. Because to me, not giving a budget to a community, to a designer is like saying, here's my credit card, have at it. Well, I've got to pay that bill. And I'm also looking at a $24 million bond that I need for my wastewater plant. So I'm a little concerned that we aren't truly looking at all of the aspects here. For me personally, I think that the, the 1.5 for the, for the memorial is great and if we're going to use taxpayer money, I'd like to set aside a grant, utilizing that grant money to give to veterans who need help and support. I mean, I got another flyer for another barbecue fundraiser for a veteran. Well, if we had grant money available to actually help them, wouldn't that be feasible? Or using some money to buy a van so that veterans can drive veterans to the, to the VA? Or having services available to assist our veterans? So those are other questions that I'd like to have talked about as well. So that's, that's really all of my concerns. I just, I'm just so pleased that we're moving forward. When I started on this council, the amount of money that was set aside and dedicated to this was $10,000, $10,000. Then we went to $25,000. And to see the generosity of a community partner take us to $1.5 million is just astounding to me and I'm just so thankful. I just, as a councilwoman, as a taxpayer, I always have to watch my bottom line. So those were my questions that I'd like staff to, to consider when they're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
I have so much to say on this. But I'm going to keep it short. Thank you, Councilmember Norio, for bringing the TDS contract forward at the beginning. It was not on a lot of councils radar. It wasn't what we were thinking about, but it is exactly what we needed to make this project happen. As, as she stated, the Veterans Memorial had been on our budget and a line item at $10,000 for, for several years and ideas had been kicked around back and forth. And as we're negotiating the TDS contract and talking about prices and services and everything like that, and getting the best price and the best services and getting upgrades and doing all those things, councilmember Dex would talk to me about it as we'd be in meetings and push us to, to try to do something real special about the Veterans Memorial. And he would, he would talk about that need to actually get that, that budget item moving forward. And so we kind of put our heads together and I just want to say that this is what happens. I am so proud of this council. This is what happens when council works together. You can see there's 10 items on here and we used those first two items to catapult us to get these 10 items done. And we walked into those TDS offices and we looked Ray Bryant and Rick in the eyes and said, guys, we need you to come big on a partnership with us. We love that you pick up our trash and do a good job on the services, but we need a Veterans Memorial and we need a big Veterans Memorial. And they said, let's talk. And it wasn't easy and it was longer than we anticipated, but I just want to say that your guys, this company, the Gregory family, fantastic partners. And I've been a, a TDS customer for 13 years living here in Kyle, so I understood the quality of service that you guys provide. I understood what it means when something didn't get picked up and we'd give you a call and you guys would be there next day to make sure it was corrected. I appreciate you, Ray and Rick, for taking all the time that you did to work this out. There was parts that were really frustrating, but we just kept moving forward and working through them. I thank the Gregory family for your passion. For, for anybody who wants to understand the importance of recycling and wants to hear it given so passionately on what you need to do with sorting items, talk to Adam Gregory. And he will change the way you think about that, taking the two seconds to sort your items before you throw them in the trash and ultimately end up in a landfill or recycling center. I also want to really thank Mo Mark, the developer, because without them, this park wouldn't be possible in the same way. That hundred and, that $1.5 million would not go nearly as far if we had to talk about land acquisition for it. They've come really strong, not only for the park, but for our police station. And so I am again, so proud of our staff and our council for all the hard negotiations and hard work and time they put into this, to make sure that we can provide for not only our police officers, not only for honoring our veterans, but creating great public spaces for our residents and at the same time, renewing a contract that lowers the price, increases the services, and just makes Kyle an overall better place. So thank you, TDS, thank you, Mo Mark, thank you, veterans. And on a side note, I will not be stopping at $1.5 million in the idea of what we think about this Veterans Memorial. Wherever we get that extra money, public, private donations, our visions are grand for that park and they're grander than 1.5. So I hope that we can achieve those and I believe that we can do that together. So thank you, council, and thank you, staff. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Paige. The amount of time, this is our unsung hero right here, our city attorney. The amount of time she had to go back and forth and listen to everybody yelling at her. Thank you.
I did owe that to Paige. Anyone else?
All right, I'll go next. I was kind of holding myself off because as they say, you know, it struggles to be brief. Brevity is certainly not my strongest suit, but I'm, I will second everything, third and, and fourth everything that was said. There's a lot of people to thank. There's plenty of people and things to go around with what was accomplished here. You know, when it was originally proposed, I think it was early fall for us to consider negotiating a renewal of the TDS contract. There was quite a bit of discussion about that and it, it kind of got kicked around and it got a little heated up here on the dais, but it, it was the start of something really great. And it's always interesting, you know, hindsight's 20/20 when you go back and look at things. But, so I'm, I'm really grateful for the open-mindedness of my colleagues here on the dais to consider doing something like this that we even, we heard from our, our community and there's other businesses and your competitors out there that certainly had things to say. But, you know, we, we took this brave step forward. I want to say that, you know, there, there's a number of things in these, in these agenda items, so I'm just going to touch on the three of them briefly. I second what was said about TDS. You know, I remember when I was first elected to council in November 2017, I believe it was a few short months later, I was at a conference and TDS was there and I had, had known Mr. Ray Bryant for a number of years, former resident of Kyle and, and councilmember in District 6 where I live, and always admired his passion towards community and, and service. I remember he told me at a chamber event that I was going to be on the dais one day and I looked at him and said, you don't know what you're talking about. And, but Mr. Bryant and certainly his lovely wife Sandra have been great community activists and servants to this community and two individuals that I've looked up to for a long time. And it made sense that someone that was so well-invested in, in values and, and service to the community that he would work for a company like TDS. And that's where I first was introduced to the individuals at TDS and I could tell there was something different. And And, uh, when we talked, we didn't, we didn't just talk trash. Uh, we, uh, we talked about the core values of, of the company. And, um, I, I would say that made a huge impression on me. I will also say personally, a- as a Christian, it made a big deal to me when you all prayed before dinner. Um, that was something that particularly stood out to me. Um, but, uh, i- it's, that's what I want to just reiterate about TDS is that I saw that there were very strong values, um, with this company. It wasn't just about the dollar or a bottom line or anything like that. I had the, uh, privilege of coming out and taking a tour of the facilities and certainly learning a great deal from Adam and everybody else. Uh, and they, they certainly care, uh, about what they do. And i- it's just, it's so, it's just such a pleasure to see that commitment from a company and one that has been around as long as it has. Uh, Mr. and Mr. Gregory, uh, we've been calling them. Uh, I'm, I know you all are certainly proud of, uh, your family and your, your employees and it's an extension of your family as well. Uh, it's a great group. Yes, we learned a lot, and there were some hard times, but always, always felt confident about it and always, uh, felt like it was, it, both sides were really trying to come to a, an agreement and an understanding and, and certainly looking out for our residents at Kyle, and I felt that just as well from you all's end. So, uh, I want to thank you all for that. Uh, next, uh, would be our, um, Memorial Park, which, uh, it cannot be understated in the support TDS is giving us with that. Um, you know, it was something that, uh, we knew we had wanted to do for a long time, and, uh, it's been a long road coming. Um, but, uh, TDS, you all have done wonders, and I love the opportunity, um, to also, with, with the in-kind contribution, for us to use, uh, our own waste and recycle that and, and concrete and, and different things to then utilize and put in something that will be a memorial and something will stand in this community probably longer than many of us may be around. Uh, that is just so beyond me and just gets me excited, just the thought of it. So, uh, I want to thank you all for your ingenious idea of thinking about doing that and, and, and the opportunities. Uh, I think there are going to be plentiful. Um, I want to thank, um, you know, our, our veterans and our first responders back there, uh, as a part of the steering committee, uh, that this council put together. Uh, we knew that it was something that was very important to us. That's why we, um, appointed three councilmembers to this steering committee, just short of what we can have as a quorum. That means we wanted to get this done. And so, uh, I want to thank the council for doing that. I want to also, uh, thank, uh, my colleagues, Councilmember Villalobos and Councilmember Rizzo of being a part of this, uh, committee as well. I want to thank, uh, Bobby and the extension of your family at VFW, um, and the input you all have given us and the insight there. I think it's, it's going to continue. I know it's going to continue. Uh, the approval by the committee to recommend to the council of Nudge Design as the landscape architect, I think is, is, uh, a great company. We had the opportunity, the steering committee, to, uh, interview them and some others, and it was a very difficult decision. We still have staff that's going to bring back the scope of services and work with them, uh, on a budget and different things like this. It's just simply identifying that this is the firm we feel is right, that can help meet our vision and what we want to do with that. So, I'm particularly excited about that and, um, happy to have you all here with us. Um, and so, um, definitely there will be much more input from our, our citizens and our community going forward. All of that is to be done. This is just the beginning, you all. And so, uh, I'm excited to be a part of this, a very small part of it, and, um, I want to also, uh, we mentioned the first responders because we, we know that our first responders are near and dear to our community. We've had some that have served and, and lost their line, uh, life in the line of duty here, and, uh, we can't thank those, uh, men and women in uniform, uh, in our local communities that, uh, bring so much to us and, and are, do it so selflessly. Um, and, um, finally, I want to say, um, a special thank you to, uh, uh, Momark as well and the, um, the partnership that we've had. Uh, I know there was an initial plan of what would happen and what is currently being called uptown, but you all haven't missed a beat and have stayed right there with you, with us as we've challenged and, and pushed our ideas forward. And, uh, I can't thank you all enough for being so receptive to those, those ideas and, and those tight deadlines and timeframes that we want to work with, and I know Steve has been smiling about that one. Uh, but, uh, you know, it, it's inside, it's exciting. We're ambitious. Obviously, this is something we've never done before, e- even at a council meeting. But, uh, I want to, just didn't want to be remissed on, uh, all those folks that were a part of it. Thank you to our staff. Scott, please extend that to any and everybody who's been a part of this. We also thanked Paige, our city attorney, as well. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't finish my comments with saying who I really saw, um, someone work and show their value like I've never seen. And not that he didn't show it before, but, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Coach, uh, with this contract negotiation. I was in awe watching you at work, and, um, you were clearly a very savvy, uh, contract negotiator and businessman. Um, so I, I definitely appreciated having you on our side because they had Rick Froman on their side.
Rick versus Rick.
Just kidding, Rick. But, uh, but no, I, I just want to thank that, and like I said, uh, it, it's been said, uh, here as well, but it, it's just an, such an honor to, you know, I, those that know me know how much I love this community, and, um, those that most don't know, um, the amount of hours that all of us think about this city and, and, and deal with things. But, uh, I'm just so honored to sit on this dais with these particular folks and this council that are so driven and so forward-thinking to want to accomplish, uh, bigger and better things for our residents. And, uh, we only sit in these seats temporarily, and, um, you know, it, it's such an honor to, to be able to do this, but it's also humbling and, and reminds us that, uh, community is what it's all about, and being there for your fellow person is what it's all about. And it's, uh, I think it's kind of interesting that we're doing this, so one day after MLK Day, in which those values were spoken about by him as well. So, uh, I'll conclude my comments there, but thank you all.
Counselor Sheehan.
And I'm going to try and get through this without getting too emotional. First of all, as most of you know, um, I was a very big proponent of taking this contract to bid and, uh, do RFP and let whoever wanted to bid for it, go for it. However, TDS, thank you for, first of all, bringing forth all the services that you are willing to bring forth to the residents of this city while decreasing the rate. That's just amazing. So, thank you as the, as the daughter of a Vietnam Vet and the partner of a current active, uh, duty military member. I also want to say thank you. This memorial means a great deal to me and the community. So, again, thank you, TDS. Thank you, Momark. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Paige. But more importantly, to the members of our first responders, thank you for all of your hard work you do every day, and for the members of our VFW and our AMVets. Thank you for the sacrifice that you have shown for the citizens of this United States of America and for your families for their sacrifice. I thank you, so.
Anyone else? Motions? I'm sorry, say that again? Um, we can, if you want to, if you want to bring them up. It was a good time to segue. We can bring them up at the next meeting also to elaborate more, if you'd like to do that. Yeah, we'll, we'll bring them up next time. We'll go ahead and do a motion if that's all right.
So, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Uh, to approve items number one through 10 as written.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Coach. It's been seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Is there any further discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose five and 10. I'm an aye for all the others.
Okay. Motions carry. Uh, next up is our presentation ceremony of $1.5 million check, which represents $750,000 in cash, $750,000 in kind to the city of Kyle from Texas Disposal Systems. I'm going to ask the council to come around, I'm going to, uh, turn the floor over to Mr. Gregory. I'm also going to ask, uh, any in the audience who are veterans or first responders who would like to come and join us behind the lectern as, uh, the presentation takes place. It will only be just a minute. We got to keep coming around if possible. It's really hard to move. We're just going to have to do the best we can with this here. Is that okay? Um, uh, it, it's my distinct, uh, pleasure to, uh, turn over the floor to the owner of Texas Disposal Systems, Mr. Bob Gregory.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Wow. Forty-two years ago, we started out, and our goal was to be noticeably different, noticeably better. And I get emotional, too. God has blessed our business. I am honored to stand here today with a council such an articulate, amazing council. City staff, amazing, and all the, all they've done in this. And I'm humbled, uh, that we have a chance to partner with Kyle and do what we've done for the last 13 years and what we will do for many, many years to come. I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Ray and Rick for the tremendous job they did on this. Equally, I'd like to thank the staff that we have, the team, Team TDS, that has made this happen for all these years. And I'd like to start out by recognizing owners, Jimmy and, um, myself and my, here's Jimmy, right here, this old, much older-looking guy, right here. We started out, just the two of us and one driver, 42 years ago, with that goal in mind to be a ministry. Crazy, isn't it? To be in the solid waste business and to have a ministry. But that's what it has been all these years. Our wives Kay and Janet, stand up, please, and all the Gregories here. Some of y'all are standing. Justin, Adam, Paul, I don't see Jennifer. All the, all the executive managers, the, the, Tom, where are you? Tom, standing there. All the, all the directors, managers, and very importantly, the drivers and the people that make this thing go, I'd like for you to raise your hand. Most of you are standing. All the, all those that lead the company. I cannot tell you how proud Jimmy and I and our wives are, our family are, of this, that our group, our Team TDS. I can't tell you how proud we are to partner with such a wonderful, incredible city as Kyle. Noticeably different, noticeably better, gives us a goal to do things differently and better, obviously. Uh, if you ever come to, to our facility, you'll see that we have long-term plans. We think long-term. It's wonderful to have a partner that joins us in those long-term plans and where we can be a part of their long-term plans. A lot of what we do is involving taking recycled materials and making things out of them, whether it's concrete products or compost or soils, uh, various types of things that we make that we're really looking forward to bringing back into this project. It's a thrill for us to be part of this, and I've, uh, we put, we have many, many contracts with our 1,000 employees that we have from the, just Jimmy and I and one employee up to, uh, up to where we are now. And I've, I, we don't have a better situation than this with any of the contracts. And we thank you, all of us, on behalf of Jimmy and Janet and Kay and I, the other Gregories, uh, all of the employees. Thank you for this confidence. We are committed to giving you good, solid waste services, both in collection, uh, never to ill, to bogus recycle, never to do anything that we're, that's not straight up and above board. And thank you for the trust that you've given us. I, I, I too could go on and on, but I won't. Uh, I would like to, uh, I'm, my name is Bobby, really Bobby Gregory. There's another Bobby here. There he is, right there. Would you come up and accept this check? And mayor, how else, uh, who, who else should? Okay. Let's, let's, let's step right.
I love you already.
It is a distinct honor to be able, on behalf of all of our company, to join as a partner in the Heroes Project and the Heroes Memorial Park.
And it is, it is tremendous opportunity for us to work with the city with a, with a half and half, $750,000 in cash payment and $750,000 in in-kind services to help make this thing what y'all want it to be. And we look forward to this opportunity to work with it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bobby.
So, uh, probably not the normal veteran you think of when you look at me. I'm a lot younger than some of my colleagues that are standing behind me. Um, I've been, been blessed to, uh, take command of our VFW here in Kyle, Catty Corner to the City Hall. Um, and I just want to say thank you to the city for helping us push this along. It's something that we've been wanting to do for the longest time. We've kind of seen a void, and now that void is getting filled. Um, thank you to TDS.
Thank you to TDS, all y'all great employees. We really appreciate it. It's definitely something that we know will be a destination here in Kyle. We'd definitely make it the grand gesture of the Veterans Memorial, as well as with the first responders being included in that. I want to thank the KPD out there, firefighters, EMS, especially all my veteran buddies. Once again, thank you, City of Kyle. We really appreciate it, TDS. You've been very grateful. That's it for me. We're going to take about a 15-minute recess. We're going to reconvene. We have other city businesses to start. We'll reconvene at 8:40. So thank you very much. Get back started. We still have quite a bit of business to go through.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Tenoyan.
I'd like to say thank you to TDS for the pie and the coffee, please.
Thank you for the pie and the coffee. I second that. All those in favor?
Say pie.
Say pie, nice. All right. We'll go ahead and do a motion to reconvene.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries six to zero. Next up, agenda item number 12, approval, 12, 13, 14, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Tenoyan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of September the 3rd, September the 9th, and September the 16th.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Tenoyan, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries seven to zero. Next up...
Six, zero.
Six to zero, sorry. Motion carries six to zero. Councilmember Coach is still in the foyer. So next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you direct those comments to the mayor and council, and that you fill out a citizen comments form. I have a few registered to speak. First up, Ms. Kate Johnson. Yes. Next up, Ms. Rebecca Chapa, same thing? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Rebecca Chapa. I want to first say congratulations to the whole dais on such a wonderful accomplishment with the partnership with TDS and for the memorials. So it's great. I also have a bit of a concern regarding our traffic out here on Center Street. And I know a lot of that has to do with text dot, but if there's any way that y'all can assist, or the city staff can assist with fixing the lights, that they're more at a consistent time. Also, with the fact on if there's any way to do something similar to Austin with the asking not to block intersections, because I have a worrisome that people are trying to turn when oncoming traffic and not being able to also let people in. And also, I think of the fact of our emergency service people, that they're not able. I can hear the fire trucks when they have to come out blaring, just so they can try to get onto the main road. So if there's anything that y'all can help with that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chapa, do you also want to come on agenda?
Yes.
Next up, Ms. Evangelina Chapa, did I just... Okay. And next up, Ms. Lila Knight, same thing? Okay. That's all of the forms that I have. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments, it's now closed. Next up, presentation, Martin Luther King Jr. proclamation. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote and appreciate the support for our Martin Luther King Jr. proclamation. As we all know, Martin Luther King Jr. Day was yesterday, and wanted to remember that with a city council proclamation. Whereas, the city of Kyle encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. And whereas, the city of Kyle commemorates the life and efforts of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., along with many others, to redeem this nation of racism, war, poverty, injustice, and in King's words, realize, quote, "an opportunity to inject morality in the veins of our civilization," end quote. And whereas, let us not forget the powerful and thought-provoking words of the former civil rights leader, quote, "Everybody can be great, because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love," end quote. And whereas, let us as a community remember the important reminders of Dr. Reverend King and how we should reflect. Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? To remember, our strongest communities are built when we look out for our fellow people. And therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Kyle that January 20th, 2020, should be remembered as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, in recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. and celebrating the life he lived, working tirelessly for victims of racism, poverty, and injustice, while promoting love, compassion, and unity with your neighbors and all members of our communities. Signed by the mayor and city council. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate the continuous support by my colleagues on council for this proclamation over the past three years now. And if, you know, we just took some pictures, but if we wouldn't mind if we could join anybody else that wanted to be stepped forward with the council in recognition for Martin Luther King Day, I'd certainly appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Anything else you wanted to add? Anyone? Okay. All right, next up, agenda item number 16, recognition of police officers for meritorious conduct in the line of duty. Chief Barnett, fitting time to bring this forward.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you very much. For the record, my name's Jeff Barnett, chief of police. If I could ask for the following officers, when you hear me in the back, if you would make your way to the front over here, Officer Schuler, Officer Carnes, Officer Narvise, Officer Congdon, Officer Waters, Officer Bryant. Folks, I don't know what's about to come, so they're just as surprised as y'all. Mayor and council, I appreciate you giving us a few minutes to recognize some of our staff members. They routinely go above and beyond the call of duty. They routinely serve you in a way that would make you proud, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I want to recognize a few of them. We have a committee in place that receives recommendations for meritorious conduct and such that makes its way to my office, and I'm proud to bring forward tonight some of our latest recipients of awards and commendations and certificates of merit. The first one that I'll read, and when I call your name, if you'll step forward and the rest of you stay there, and then we're going to go back. I'm going to read them all in a series of groups, so maybe we can do our applause at the end. First, Officer Lacy Carnes, step forward. On December the 6th, 2019, Officer Lacy Carnes observed two suspicious vehicles while patrolling a neighborhood. Officer Carnes stopped both vehicles and identified eight suspects. Through investigation, she established that both vehicles were stolen and the suspects were traveling around the area, breaking into vehicles and stealing cars. Officer Carnes' proactivity and her thorough investigation skills solved multiple felony crimes across multiple jurisdictions that evening and broke up a prolific crime ring. Officer Carnes is receiving the police commendation award. Next, if I could have Officer Preston, if you could join me at the front, Officer Preston, and he did not know that was coming, so he looks surprised, doesn't he? So before I go into the next group, I want to set the stage for how this come to be. I told you that the officers go above and beyond on a daily basis, sometimes risking their lives, sometimes saving the lives of others. The reason why I bring Officer Preston forward is I want to highlight, and I want to give him recognition for something that he initiated in our department several years ago. As we all learned years ago about self-help, buddy aid, about taking care of ourselves and making sure that we can take care of our partner officer should they get shot, Officer Preston continued on that and wanted to make sure that he provided training and skills that could help our officers if they needed to save either their own life or the life of another. Officer Preston reached out and brought an idea forward to command staff so that we could outfit all of our officers and our vehicles with life-saving tourniquets, stopping the bleed as part of saving lives. He went out, he had the training, he exceeded in that training, he went and got more advanced level training. We partnered with the San Marcos Hayes County EMS. We partnered with their EMS director, Dr. Catherine Remick, and we went to a train-to-trainer. Officer Preston secured tourniquets and the training necessary for our officers to go out and help save lives, and what I'm going to describe to you is exactly what they did. On December the 14th, Officer Schuler and Officer Carnes. On December the 14th, 2019, Officers Schuler and Carnes responded to a major accident where a motorcyclist struck a pole, severing one of his legs. Officer Schuler, with the assistance of Officer Carnes, applied a tourniquet to the subject's leg to stop the bleeding. Doctors reported that his action saved the life of that subject that night. Officer Schuler is being awarded the life-saving award, and Officer Carnes is being awarded the certificate of merit. Their quick thinking and teamwork saved that subject's life that evening here in Kyle. Next, it would be Officer Narvise and Officer Congdon. Officer Narvise is unable to be here tonight, but these two officers responded on May the 20th, 2018, to a major accident where one of the drivers was severely injured. The driver's arm was partially severed, and Officer Narvise, with the assistance of Officer Congdon, applied a tourniquet to the injured subject to stop the bleeding while the fire department extricated him from the vehicle. Their quick thinking and teamwork allowed the fire department the time necessary to remove him from the vehicle and to get him to the proper medical care, saving his life. Officer Narvise is being awarded the life-saving award, and Officer Congdon is being awarded their certificate of merit. Thank you. Officer Waters. On October the 10th, 2019, Officer Nathaniel Waters responded to an auto pedestrian accident where a female was struck by a vehicle. Upon arrival, he observed the subject had a severe leg injury and applied the first of two tourniquets that would be required to stop the bleeding. His action allowed her the time to get to the hospital to receive the necessary care. Officer Waters' quick action saved the life of this lady, who would unfortunately expire a month later from complications. Officer Waters is receiving the life-saving award. Officer Bryant. On April the 7th, 2019, Officer Bryant responded to a disturbance, and when he arrived, he observed a female that had a large and severe cut on one of her arms from an attempted suicide. Officer Bryant immediately applied a tourniquet to her arm, allowing her the time to be taken to the hospital for emergency life-saving care. Officer Bryant's attention to his surroundings and quick thinking saved the life of the female subject. Officer Bryant is receiving the life-saving award. If it were not for the teachings and the effort of Officer Preston and the heroic actions of these officers, these people would not be alive today. I think we should commend them all, and we are here to offer them their life-saving awards and their commendations, and I think they deserve a round of applause. We ask Officer Preston to be able to provide them with their life-saving award, since he's the one that taught them that life-saving skill and made sure that they had the equipment necessary. So I have a couple more. Would y'all be willing to do a picture at the end if I get some more up here? So if y'all can step to the side, don't go far. I have one more group of officers that we need to recognize. If I could have Officer Roy Jones, Sergeant Tim Griffith, and two more employees that were unable to make it tonight, would be our records specialist, Maria Carla Martinez, and Officer Daniel Rainwater. So coming forward, you will see Officer Roy Jones and Sergeant Tim Griffith. These gentlemen don't know the award and recognition that they're about to receive now. We have Lieutenant Marmelejo and Captain Hernandez here, part of our administrative team, to help me provide these awards. Each year, we try to strive to recognize the hard work and dedication that our officers exhibit throughout the year, not only one action, but things that they do every day, day in and day out, to make sure that we're serving you and we're serving the citizens in an exemplary manner. I am proud to announce to you that the 2019 Officer of the Year is Officer Roy Jones. This officer has a passion for the job that is unrivaled by most. He has taken the initiative to develop multiple narcotics cases and captured several prolific criminal suspects through his very proactive work. He is a dedicated and very hard police officer, a hard-working police officer. It was noted that this person has taken the initiative to improve and grow as an officer and a leader within the agency, and is respected throughout the county for his efforts. He brings praise to this agency and to this community through his efforts every day, and I'm proud to congratulate you as the 2019 Kyle Police Officer of the Year. The last one to announce, as our civilian of the year, I mentioned Carla Martinez is not here, and our rookie of the year, Officer Daniel Rainwater, not here, but they deserve that. The last one would be our supervisor of the year. As you see before, Sergeant Tim Griffith, who supervises the special services bureau, is a tenured officer within the police department and is a respected leader within the agency. Not only has he served in his position, but he's also been instrumental in the police association and their partnership with the city and the administration as well. This supervisor took over a very complex division. He supervises the special services division within our agency. He supervises both sworn and non-sworn employees spread across different realms of enforcement areas within the agency. He's revolutionized several processes within the department in order to move us forward towards the future that serves, and he serves in numerous other roles outside of his assigned duties. He shows true leadership on a daily basis, and he's been recognized by his peers as the 2019 Kyle Police Supervisor of the Year. Congratulations. And that would conclude our presentations. Do you mind if we get one picture with everybody? Come on back in, group. If we have other officers, if any of the officers from the back want to join us, now would be a good time. This is some meeting, huh? Wow. All right. They deserve one, too. Next up, Agenda Item Number 17, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation and Update. Hmm, this is a little out of order, actually. I'm going to skip that one. We only have one item on the consent. You saw how much I was focused on this part of the item as far as making sure everything is in the right order. I'm going to skip to Appointments. Next up, Agenda Item Number 18, Appoint Nominee for Position on the City of Kyle Ethics Commission, Counselor Coach.
This is my appointment. I appointed Brad Graut. I don't have a lot of nice things to say about Brad, except that he's probably one of the most straightforward, honest people I know. When I think of good moral character, I think of Brad Graut. It would be an honor to have him as my Ethics Commission Appointment, and that's why I am bringing him forward for a vote.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve. It's been moved by the Mayor, seconded by Counselor Tenorio. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 19, Appoint a Representative to the CapCog Clean Air Coalition. Counselor Ellison.
So I've been our representative on the CapCog Clean Air Coalition for the past year. I was appointed, I guess, it might have been the end of 2018, but essentially, we need to reappoint someone. They meet once a quarter, I think on a Wednesday, and so as a member of that group, we need an appointee. I didn't particularly have a recommendation or anybody. I'd do it again unless someone else had a desire to.
So we just have one position? You felt that, filled that one?
Correct.
Counselor Rizzo. I'm sorry, I thought I saw you.
Oh, so being a part of CapCog, I'd like to be considered for this appointment.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Rizzo as our CapCog Representative.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Counselor Rizzo to the Clean Air Coalition. Is there any further discussion?
And we currently have Mr. Rizzo on the...
General Assembly.
The General Assembly as well. Okay.
Correct.
Awesome.
Anything else? You're good with it?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Normally, I go fast when we recommend someone else, and I call a vote before I forget, but since you brought it forward, then that works out. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 20, Economic Development Tourism Board Reappointment.
Boyd.
Boyd Reappointments. Board Reappointments.
Too much sugar from that pie, huh?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's what happens when you go fast.
That is true.
Diana Torres, Economic Development Director, for the record. Brian was here earlier, but he had to make an exit, so I am here representing the board to recommend the consideration of reappointments to the Economic Development and Tourism Board of Tony Spano, representing the development community from Bigelow Homes, and Neil Kelly, representing the medical community from Seton Hayes.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointments of Tony Spano and Neil Kelly to the Economic Tourism Development and Tourism Board.
All right, it's been motioned by Counselor Tenorio, seconded by Counselor Member Villalobos that we approve Mr. Spano and Mr. Kelly. Is there any further discussion? I think Mr. Kelly's good. You couldn't get anyone other than Tony Spano? Anyone?
Never heard of him.[850.37][850.37](laughter)
I hope he's watching. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Next up is, since our consent agenda item is just one item, we'll bring it forward. It's Second Reading and Ordinance Reappealing Ordinance Number 975, authorizing and directing the installation and erection of no-through truck signs on Kyle Crossing from Kohler's to Vista Ridge. Is there anything to add on this, Mr. Sellers?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number 975, authorizing and directing the installation and erection of no-through truck signs on Kyle Crossing from Kohler's Crossing to Vista Ridge, and the city limits of Kyle, providing an effective date to making sure other findings and provisions related here, too.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Tenorio, seconded by Counselor Member Villalobos. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 22, Consider Approval.
What's that? Are we going back to 17?
No, that's a standing item. It stays in there, but we didn't have a consent agenda to present on unless there was something that I'm not aware of. So that item is designed to present on consent.
I had a question for Leon in regards to that item.
In regards to, all right, we're going to bring up Agenda Item Number 17, CIP Road Projects Update. Mr. Barbara, you've been summoned. That's why we have it standing, so sorry, I passed it too fast.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer.
Okay, and I know this isn't really one of our road projects, but I guess it's, the state is, our tech side's been installing the lights at Newbridge and 150, and I was wondering if you knew when those were going to be operational, or if you knew anything about that project.
I'd heard about that some time ago. I didn't know when they were going to do it, but I think that's one of two intersections, if I remember correctly, Mr. Sellers. Do you think there's two intersections they're talking about doing? That's one of them.
Okay, because they've already got the poles and the lights up on the north-south sides, so not the 150 sides, but the cross streets, so it looks like it's going to happen pretty soon, so that's why I was just wondering.
Mayor, Councilmember, let me find out. I'll get some information to you on that, get some more information. But again, I think there's two intersections they're looking at, and I'll double-check that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
While you're up here.[1006.73][1006.73](laughter)
Sorry, I tried.
Appreciate that.
So I know we made some progress on some of the, you know, some of the upgrades to the Burleson Road, but on Western, the gravel, is that still something that's still in the hopper to remove and remove the temporary ramp that goes into that park?
We checked with the contractor, Councilmember. They're still using that entrance to bring in more dirt so they can put it on the project there.
Okay.
And they're expecting, this is a contractor telling me this, but they're thinking it'll be there for another two weeks, and we will have our walkthrough hopefully later this month and wrap that up so we can get that on the punch list for sure.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, one more thing.
Counselor Schuster.
Because you mentioned Burleson Road. So Burleson Road from the Frontage Road of I-35 will be closed as of January 23rd, so in two days, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And will that ever open again?
That's not a plan, we're not planning to open it again. We're just going to, first thing we're going to do is work the utilities, and at that point, we'll rebuild that section of road and put a dead-end cul-de-sac, or actually, I think a T there to let people come in and out and get out, but it will be closed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Next up, Agenda Item Number 22, Consider Approval of an Agreement with Kyle Correctional Center for Rights of Way and Parks Maintenance. Ms. Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. I am also joined with Arthur Zamoripa. He's our park technician. Tonight, we are requesting approval of an agreement with the City of Kyle and the Kyle Correctional Facility for services by the Correctional Facility inmates to help with general park maintenance, including building trees, putting up Christmas lights, helping clean up trash. Right now, in part of the agreement, they will come once a week. We will do our best to work with them and their new warden to try and maximize labor and see if they could possibly add that, so we will call daily to see if they're available. But the agreement does include once a week through August, which is their review period for projects. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Any questions?
I have one.
Counselor Tron.
I'll go right ahead.
I just wanted to know, did they help with the Christmas lights this year?
They did. They helped for two weeks.
And it was a tremendous success, so, okay.
Right.
That's all I wanted to.
With the setup?
Yes, they helped up the lights, they helped build the trenches for the wires. So Arthur, previously, when the inmates would come and provide services to the city, he oversees the inmates on-site, and he'll do that again.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think this is a fantastic idea. I did see them out there when, in that hot two-week stretch that y'all had to put those lights out, so that's phenomenal. I think obviously it helps us out, we're getting some more person power out there, but also I think that's a great opportunity for those incarcerated persons to, and have an opportunity to, you know, get outside of those walls, and I'm sure, you know, they have some kind of process to just select those, and so I think that's just a really great opportunity to show those that are incarcerated that they can be a part of the community, so I think that's awesome. Thank you all for doing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Tenorio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement with the Kyle Correctional Center for Right of Ways and Park Maintenance.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Tenorio, seconded by Counselor Member Ellison. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Great job.
All right, next up, First Reading and Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, admitting Chapter 5 of the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances in its entirety, adopting animal control regulations designed to protect the public health and safety, providing comprehensive requirements for the keeping and care of animals and fowl, providing for the control, regulation, licensing, permitting, and vaccination of dogs and cats, and requirement for other animals, fowl, livestock, and wild and exotic animals, et cetera. Counselor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. So, when was this? This is a few months ago that we had, I think it was actually towards the end of summer, we had a couple of different families that went through a pretty difficult time. One of, one family, I'm forgetting his last name, but Freddie is his first name, came to council and expressed an unfortunate situation that happened with his pet and his family that was killed by some neighboring dogs, and then probably not even a month later, the Gordon family had an incident as well. And so I think that kind of compelled us as a council to look at our dangerous animal ordinance. There were definitely some frustrations on the part of those families and the process that they went through, and just formally understanding where their rights were and what opportunities they had. And so I want to thank the council for appointing the committee, myself and Councilmember Tenorio, to review the dangerous animal ordinance. We had some really robust discussions about this. It was even commented, I think, by one of the folks that were on, I think it was Sergeant Griffith, that stated this would be a responsible pet owner ordinance, because we really discovered there were, a lot of the shortcomings were coming there. But we did incorporate Freddie, and the Gordons in particular were a big part of this process in giving their input and feedback, and I want to thank staff, Chief, Brianna. Mr. Earp was also a part of that, and being open to listening to our citizens and take their feedback. We understood they were frustrated, and thank you all for being constant professionals and moving along with that and being understanding of that. So I will go ahead and defer to you all to point out the changes that were made, but I really want to thank you all for taking your time, in particular Officer Breacher, who really sunk her teeth into this ordinance and really wanted to make it a more, a better understanding for the citizens and make it more cohesive, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. So we wanted to also thank the committee. We appreciate the work that you put in in helping us guide us through a process where we can have an ordinance that serves the citizens on both sides of an incident, but helps take care of our community, gives our animal control officer the authority necessary to make our community safer when we have such incidences that we had. The previous ordinance did not give them the full scope of authority that I think you, the council, and our citizens expect, so I appreciate that. We also had a good legal review from Irene and Paige, and we appreciate their legal expertise on this, and Mr. Earp. So it took a team to bring back some good language. While looking at the dangerous dog incidents and the language that pertains to those, Brianna also identified several areas in our ordinance that just needed some cleanup, some reorganization, some rewording for the betterment of our community so that they could easily find the ordinances that apply to proper ownership and good ownership of an animal in the city, as well as our staff and council. We can all find the ordinance. So she's actually done a comprehensive rewrite of a lot of the ordinance. It will address the needs that came out of the committee and that council expressed, and I know when it's time to turn it over to our in-house expert, because she put a lot of time and effort in this, folks, and I appreciate you letting her bring forward a lot of changes to help organize it and make it better serve the community. So if I can ask Brianna to come forward and talk about those with you.
Brianna Brecker, Animal Control Officer. So as discussed, the main things are the dangerous dog ordinance. We, everything that was discussed in meetings was added. I added some more additional requirements for the dangerous dog portions and gave us the ability to do more follow-up and more, we will be able to, if they don't comply in the future, we'll be able to pull the animals from the residence under warrants also, so there's a continued process and a continued follow-up that was not there before. We're also pulling the court into the whole process. Court will hear every case, and every case will go through the process, and the disposition of the cases will go through court, as opposed to us and then having the appeal option for the cases. Other big things were just strengthening our commercial animal enterprise stuff, giving us the ability to do more inspections with those, and any animals that had additional, people who have more than five pets in a household, making sure we have some abilities to do some inspections with them, and some strengthening of the tethering ordinance, which was brought up in the past. That pretty much summarizes most of the changes.
Yeah, we can certainly open it up to a question.
Counselor Shields.
All right, so I just, and this is more for clarification for everybody out there. So what deems an animal dangerous?
It is going to be an unprovoked bite to a person or serious injury to another animal.
So if they are kind of attacked but not bitten, you know what I'm saying, at least are being aggressive to others but have not bitten anybody, or are they still considered potentially dangerous?
We, the potentially dangerous was kind of taken out of the mix, because that was part of the, that's part of the confusion before, is we had nuisance animals, we had potentially dangerous animals, and we had dangerous animals. So it's the, it's the action of the physical, physical harm is where we have it.
So if they are aggressive and people are even afraid to walk on the street anywhere near that house because those animals are typically very aggressive to people, those are considered nuisance?
Yes, those can be the, yeah, the nuisance animals.
Okay. Once an animal is deemed dangerous, what will they have to follow in order to keep their animal?
Keep the animal. It's going to be the $250,000 worth of liability insurance. They're going to have to either have a special enclosure outside that is a chain-link kennel, concrete run, chain-link, or covered top, have their doghouse, all those requirements in there. They use the house as their structure, they can't keep the windows open with the screens, they do have to have secure indoor enclosure also. They'll have to be spayed and neutered, microchipped, they have to wear a muzzle when outside of the residence or the enclosure. They have to, as I'm throwing it all out there all at once, make sure I didn't miss any of the items. Continue to be currently vaccinated, and they have to update that. They cannot cancel the insurance policy on the animal. They have to have signage that will provide for them, because we found that that was something that was difficult for people to find the signs that we needed. They are subject to inspections randomly throughout the year. Their perimeter fence is also going to have to be locked and secured around the property. Mazels, we already talked about that, the windows. And if they move with the animals, they're going to have to... And if they move with the animals, they're going to have to let us know where that animal is moving and get prior approval from the place that they're moving to, that the animal can go there. And same thing, if someone brings a dangerous animal that's already been deemed dangerous elsewhere, they're going to have to go through the process with us and make sure everything is approved prior to coming in. And a responsible pet ownership class online for all of those pet owners, too.
Okay. And so when you come up on a scene after, you know, say, an animal has bitten somebody, can you deem them dangerous at that time and take the animal until they have fulfilled all of those requirements?
We, if they've bit a person, then they have to go into rabies quarantine for the 10 days. So they will be held at that facility until the duration of the compliance is, is handled. Or they take the animal outside of the, of the city limits to a new location for the animal, or the judge orders euthanasia, whichever the three dispositions that we have in the case.
Okay. And then back to nuisance animals. If you come up on a scene and you deem that the animal is a nuisance, what can you do? Is there, besides actually just taking them back inside their home or something, is there anything that you can do at that point? Are there any requirements for the animals?
With the nuisance animals, we can give them an order of requirements, remedial requirements that they have to do for keeping that nuisance animal in the area.
All right. And then, of course, just to let everybody know, and because this was in the previous ordinance anyway, all animals must be registered with the City of Kyle through either the website or Brianna. So, register your pets. And spay and neuter, of course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shields. I have just a couple of questions related to the signage. It says that you have to post a sign on the premises warning that there are dangerous animals on the property, and the sign will be provided to the owner by the City of Kyle with a payment for the dangerous animal registration. There's no reference, at least in that section, to where the sign has to be placed. Is there, is that somewhere else in the ordinance that I missed? Or what's the, what's the thinking there?
That was, that was the previous wording of it. And I pulled from different cities, kind of pulled a little bit from here and there. And because at one point it had yeah, just the posted on the premises. And typically what we've done in the past is there's, I have them put one on the front door. I have them put one on either side of the, of the fences is, is what we sign off on, on their inspections. So we can add that wording in there.
Say it again, how you normally have them do it?
Have it, have one on the front door and one on either fence, like front, from the front view, when you're walking up to the property on, on either side.
Okay. Because if, let's say, for example, if you told them to put it on the front door, and then they put it on the front door, and then you come back and it's gone, and they've got it around on the side where nobody can see it behind the air conditioning or something like that, is there, you know, I'm wondering what happens if they don't muzzle, if they don't keep the dog enclosed, if they don't post the signs, the way we're identifying what those ramifications are?
Yeah, that's.
I want to make sure that, that you have the ability to enforce and don't get.
Yes, we do have, we did add that section, because there, there wasn't much follow-up ability in the past. And now if they are found to be not in compliance, we can, we can seize the dog again. And there'll be a hearing again, and they'll decide whether or not we're, municipal court will decide whether or not these animals are going to stay in the household, or whether or not they have to be removed at that point.
Is there any interest in, on the council, on this dais, about making that particular section a little more robust to outline specifically at a minimum where we expect those signs to be placed, so that if they take them down, they can be not in compliance?
I would support that.
So in particular, you said the, you have the, you, the front door?
Yeah, the front door, just because a lot of people just use their house. They don't, most people don't do the kennel. A lot of them, it ends up being just the house.
So front door, you said you normally do front door and then facing on the front fence and then somewhere on the back fence facing the other way? That might be in someone else's property.
Yeah, depends on, depends on the circumstances. If they back up to something that is actually like common sidewalk or something like that, I'd have them put one there. But usually the front, either side of the front fence. Even if there is no gate.
Well, I was, I was thinking maybe instead of saying exactly where they should be, we could leave it to the discretion of the officer and then provide a general amount, and then the officer could take photos. And we could say that the, where the officer states as a part of the process, you could say, yes, it's been on the front door, and it has to be here. You identify the spot on the fence, and then post it there and take a photo, and then that would be enforceable. I don't know if that's legal to set it up that way. I'm trying to take the discretion out of the dangerous animal owner's hands and put it into our animal control department's hands to, and then if they don't do it, to make that enforceable.
You could either specify in the ordinance, or if you need a little bit of flexibility, the order from the court could specify where that's to be located. There's also a notice process that the animal control officer issues a notice and a letter that could dictate where that, yeah, so you could, you could give that discretion either through the animal control officer's notices or the court's order telling the person what they have to comply with to keep the dangerous animal.
Okay. I'm, I'm also interested in potentially the front yard, but I, I'm open to discussions on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Tenorio.
I actually like the idea of having it one on each side of the fence. So it's like your front door, your swinging door for your gate, and then the other side of the gate. So it's all points of that front where, where an animal is going to escape through.
You're not talking about the gate for the actual pin. You're talking about the gate on the, that gets you, lets you into the backyard, right?
So each side of it. So there's actually three signs.
Keep in mind, some houses are on the corner, so you'd have another area you'd have to cover there if they're on a corner lot. So I think we'd need to leave it discretion of the officer.
I like the idea of more than two, because you're going to have different points of openness. But I also, I wanted to just state that one of the things that I really liked about the changes in this ordinance is the fact that it actually gives some bite to, that was kind of a silly word.
That was a good one. We all heard it.
Like, okay, I just got it, sorry. A little late. But it gives some, some opportunities to actually, and to enforce this ordinance. And that's one of the things that I really like. It gives more control to our animal control officers to assure that the safety of the public is, is number one. So I'm totally in support of this whole thing, and I think that Brianna did an amazing job. And I just wanted to say that.
This is first reading, so we could give direction to, to, to make that particular section more robust and have them bring it back on second reading. Anyone else want to speak before Councilwoman Shields or myself continue? Councilwoman Shields.
I am still a little concerned that, for nuisance animals, just to make sure, because I'd like to prevent an animal from becoming a dangerous animal. And, you know, try to make sure that we keep them contained in the yard before they get out and actually bite somebody. So as I said earlier, when you have residents who are afraid to walk down that block of a street, because the dogs are constantly out and they're just aggressive to everybody, I just want to make sure that we can try and prevent them from becoming deemed dangerous, because they've actually bitten somebody.
Yeah. And the, did not mention, on the licensing, because you mentioned the license, city registration, we did also strengthen that portion of it, because there was, one of the concerns was the chronic violators, the chronically loose dogs, and the potential to, to go forward with something where they have a continued issue. So we do have a section with revocation of license, but also deeming them not eligible for a license or a permit. And that is after three or more impounds in a 12-month period, the animal being in possession of the animal control division for any amount of time after being contained by animal control or an, or an individual, and delivered to animal control three or more times in a 12-month period, and then, or to fi, more, more final convictions. We always had the final convictions and the impounds, but we added in the, them being in our possession, because sometimes we are returning to owners under our current circumstances at the shelter of not being able to necessarily bring every animal we'd like to get down there. And putting the mandatory, also put the mandatory spay-neuter along with that, because second impound was mandatory spay-neuter in the past. But now I've got it written in there that we can do that for them as, if they're in our possession. So we're getting that option in there.
And if the license is revoked, does that mean?
The animal's got to go.
The animal's got to go. I'm just putting it out there for everybody. Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work with this. I know when the families first came forward during, at the end of the summer, one of the things that resonated with me is that one of the families said, my child was in the yard when our dog was attacked by that vicious animal. And I just kept thinking, chills went down my, my neck, thinking about how dangerous that situation was with an animal. This was the second time this animal had attacked someone, so attacked another animal. And I just kept thinking, we've got to do something about this. And you all have done a great job as a committee to see that our residency is, is protected and that we're, we're able to allow families to walk on sidewalks and in parks with feeling safe. I think this is a great way of moving forward. So I want to thank everybody on the committee for, for your great job. And I want to thank you for the great job you've done on this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 23 and give staff direction to bring back enhancements to section 5-175 related to making this particular section regarding signage more robust as per conversation that has had on this dais. All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tenorio. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Councilwoman Tenorio. Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. I know Councilwoman Velobis has also had a, a hand in this as well. This is needed. We have a lot of dogs in our community and, and creating rules that make it very clear about, you know, the, the types of animals that we want to allow in our community. And if, you know, if there are animals that are on the dangerous side, that our rules are very clearly weighted towards protecting other animals. And obviously, health and welfare of our residents is, is obviously something that's valuable to me. I didn't realize that, that we had these issues. And you, Councilmember Ellison in particular, you took this, you know, and ran with it. Thank you all very much. It's a, it's a great thing to get a look at this and make it better. So. Anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I am going to object to this being finally passed, so we'll come back for a second reading. All right, next up, agenda item number 24, an ordinance admitting chapter 53 of the City of Kyle for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 41.3 acres, 3.8 acres of land from agricultural to single-family residential R1-2, and to assign original zoning to approximately 8.01 acres of land from agricultural to retail services for the property located between Opel and Roland west of Paramount subdivision. This item does have a public hearing. Mr. Kuntz, you want to present? And we'll open it up.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Howard Kuntz. I'm the Community Development Director. As you stated, this is a property that in total is just barely over 49 acres. It's located between Roland and Opel in the southwest quadrant of the city, and is directly adjacent to what we are referring to as the Paramount subdivision. This land has been acquired by the same development team as Paramount. It's 50 additional acres immediately adjacent. And they are seeking to assign zoning, original zoning, for about 80% of it as R1-2, and the remaining 20%, they sought RS, following our analysis and evaluation of the properties. The staff recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was that the residential zoning was completely appropriate, and we fully support that, but also believe that the commercial zoning should not be as intense as RS, which is our highway commercial. It's our most permissive commercial district. And instead should, should be stepped down to neighborhood commercial. So about a week ago, exactly a week ago tonight, this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And after some brief discussion, Planning and Zoning voted unanimously six to nothing to recommend the staff approval, which was the 41 acres and change to R1-2, and the remainder to be community commercial. There is a map that's in the staff report.
Howard, I just want to clarify, in your first remarks, you said neighborhood commercial.
I'm sorry.
The answer is community commercial, correct?
Yes, my, that's my area. Community commercial, CC. Community commercial is mildly more permissive as far as uses goes, but still has the architectural controls written right into the ordinance itself. So we found that to be more, more appropriate. I can make myself available for any questions.
Okay, before we do questions, this item has a public hearing. So if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item?
My name is Angelita Tobias, and I live at 1818 Roland Lane. And my concern about this is that the road as we have it right now, Roland Lane, is quite, is getting quite dangerous. We have a lot of 18-wheelers that are coming through there, and, and the road is very narrow. And I call it the double S. I've lived there for 43 years. And the road right where they're going to put, we're thinking about making these changes, is not suitable for, for any more high-traffic area. And that's what I see happening. Before, when we, my husband and I moved there, we could come up to Roland Lane and look both ways, and we could get into the road. Now we wait and, wait and wait for the cars that are coming back and forth. It's very highly used. And we do have a lot of big trucks coming by there. So my concern is I go east from my property, east toward I-35, I, I reached that double, I call it a double S. And, thank you. And I have spoken to some of the city crew about possibly putting the lines or redoing the lines, so that it's quite dangerous when you meet that double S. There's, the lines are faded off. And we have people that are coming into the incoming lane, and I travel that every day. And I've had a lot of close calls. We have had a close call. We did have a serious accident there. People trying to come to the stop sign, then going into the wedding venue, and there's a stop sign coming from the east. And it's very, very dangerous. So I'm, I'm opposed to that unless the city is planning to, to redo that road. And I know I have the 150 loop to, to address, and that's another issue, of the 150 loop coming in, in my area and into my property. So I've got it from both sides. And I'm, I'm not opposed change. I just want responsible change and safety for everybody. We have situations where we have loose cattle. I wish the county would, and, and, you know, I live in the county right now, but I wish the county would do something similar as what they're doing, because every morning I'm dealing with three or four calves out on, on Roland Lane. And I have called them, I called the deputies, and I'm assuming that they care of it. But this morning, there's four of them outside, out in the, in, on Roland Lane. So that's a big issue, and it's a big safety issue with those loose animals having, and I know who the folks are, but, you know. I'm totally against that unless you all plan, or the developers plan, to fix that road. Another issue is, right before the railroad tracks, there was some, I guess it's the subdivision, folks, that they put in a line of, utility line of some sort, and they left it very rough. I mean, now it's getting rougher with the rains, et cetera. But I, I would like if the city could come in and put something, so that we're not going through those, through those holes there on, on, right before you reach the railroad tracks. So if that can happen, I'm assuming that, that was the So if that can happen, I'm assuming that, that was the new subdivision coming in, the road's going to be fixed, I'm, I'm assuming, and I hope I'm assuming right. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Tobias. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. Mr. Sellers, you want to speak briefly to the road?
The, the area of concern where the holes are in Roland Lane, for one, I can speak to that, and the developers here, that area will be addressed when the quiet zone improvements are, are placed, which, not sure the timing, but we're working very closely with, with Union Pacific and the consultant to get that project moving forward. So hopefully this year we can address that area, that rough area. The, the remainder of Roland Lane is, is yet to be placed on a CIP, and, and yes, we do see a lot of traffic incurring there or occurring, but at some future date with development comes the ability to fund these road improvements.
Questions for Mr. Coons?
Actually, probably for Leon. Leon, I know the, the line she was talking about that came across there. What happened is that they filled it in with base but didn't go, put the ash, the blacktop back on there, so actually has a dip in that area. Is, is that something that we're responsible for?
Councilmember, that's part of the construction project there for that particular, that Paramount subdivision, so that's the contractor that went through there and did that cut. So, and speaking to the Director of Public Works, Harper and Wilder will be getting with the inspectors and having the contractor address that problem, that utility cut.
Okay, because I hit that pretty hard, and my lineman's probably off now, so I'm just letting y'all know that. So that's why I knew about that, that intersection. But also addressing the roadway, the lines, I'd really like to see us do something with that. I know it's getting dangerous there. My mom was rear-ended off of Roland Lane, and her car was totaled, so this was just about a little over a year ago, so I, I know the concerns there, so if we, anything we can do to just help out that street would be great.
I will work with Public Works to see what we can do for that.
Thank you, Leon.
Councilmember Sheel.
Okay, Scott. So Paramount, part of their developer agreement was to help improve one of the roads. Was it Opal or was it Roland?
It's Opal.
It's Opal, okay.
Well, and part of Roland.
Part of Opal.
Yeah, the, again, the area by the railroad tracks, which would be part of the quiet zone improvements.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to double-check that. And you said that the developer was here?
Yes, ma'am.
Brett Corwin, I'm with the developer.
And would you be willing as part of the, you know, any agreement that we maybe came up with or something, would you be able to look at, you know, enhancing Roland Lane in that area?
So as part of the Paramount development, we are improving all the way from IH 35 Frontage Road all the way up to, it's, that map, it's, you see where the, the yellow, it's yellow and then it turns darker yellow? Like, right about, just a little, little bit, little bit, right in where those meet, that's where we'll be taking the Roland improvements up to.
Roland, okay.
And that means where our, our north-south Collector Road hits either of those roads. The thinking is, hey, if we, if we're dumping traffic out onto Opal and Roland, you know, let's make it an improved road. So I guess, west of our entry, it won't be improved, but east it will.
Okay, thank you.
Part of that improvement is to straighten out the, the double S, right?
Yeah, and part of, so you've got Paramount and the Opal, Opal and Roland, that Paramount is responsible for, and then this 50 acres where, do you have that?
It's in there, it's in the, in the moment.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I know you folks can't, you folks can't see it, but where it does that double S, we are, it, it kind of, we're planning on dedicating right away to smooth that out, so it's not like a diagonal that gets rid of the double S, but it's, it's kind of like a softer S-curve. Oh, nice.
There we go. That's twice in one day, James.
So, let's see how good this works or, see how good I am at this. So, can you guys see that?
No.
Oh, there you go.
So, it's going to go from there and then S down and connect right there. So it'll take the double, the 290 degrees out right there, and then up here, Opal will do the same thing and connect right there. Did you guys get that?
Awesome.
Okay.
Could you point out since you now, show where?
Yeah.
The improvements from 35 you were talking about?
Yes, yes. So you can see right here, so this is our entry on Opal, right here, and this road, this is what's under construction right now, with what you can see the lines. So this road goes down and then angles and then hits Roland right there. And from, I think we're responsible for maybe like 50 feet west of that and then all the way to the access road.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Any other questions?
I got a question for Howard. So the whole highlighted yellow area is the parcel, it's almost 50 acres?
Correct.
Of those 50 acres, eight of them, is the applicant's desire for it to be rezoned to community commercial?
The applicant's request was for those to be rezoned to RS, Retail Services. Staff recommendation is for that to not be RS, but instead be downzoned to community commercial, yes.
Where are those eight acres in this parcel?
So you-
They're the parts that cut off on the sides there?
Yes, they are. It's 4.92 acres along the, what will become the north side of Opal, and then it is 3.09 acres of what will become the south side of Roland. Two triangular parcels with hopefully convenience retail for the rooftops that are being established in this area of the city.
Excellent.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations of R1-2 and community commercial. Second. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Velobis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you.
Is that finally passed?
Any objection to this being finally passed? All right, it's finally passed.
Excellent, thank you.
Next up, agenda item number 25, an ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending section 53-419, conditions and limitations, section 53-444, conditions and limitation of the city, of the section and section 53-53-481, conditions and limitations. Chapter 53 zoning the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances by adding limited outdoor uses, providing for future outdoor uses, and requiring certain buffers between land uses. Mr. Coons, this item does have a public hearing.
These, this action is a direct result of direction from the council in November, where we were charged with revising the terms of our CBD 1 and CBD 2 zoning districts, which is the two commercial districts that encompass the bulk of Kyle's downtown, as well as adding some language in there for the RS district, which is our highway commercial, our most prevalent commercial in the rest of the developed portions of the city. With relation to CBD 1 and 2, these are basically expansions of use, and in RS, it is a recognition of existing uses which may or may not be conforming in legal but would be made legal by the terms of these text amendments. What this does will create the ability for outdoor uses to operate in these three districts, because currently the language of the zoning ordinance reads that in these districts, all uses enabled shall be, shall be operated indoors. And that's not always appropriate, especially whenever it comes to three specific ideas, which is outdoor dining, the display of outdoor merchandise, and live acoustic music performances or similar entertainment. And that specifically applies to primarily what we believe would be outdoor dining and recreation in our downtown. So, to that end, we put a copy of the underline and strike-through text as what the changes would be located in your packet. In 53-419, which relates to CBD 1, we've added an exception. Previously, there was an exception for deliveries, which I don't believe constitutes use, but it was in there and we abud it. The, the change added outdoor dining, outdoor display of merchandise, and live acoustic music performances or similar entertainment with no electronic sound amplification. And the same change was also made in 53-444 for CBD 2. Now additionally, we put a paragraph in there that says, if there is another use that is proposed by an operator and is not specifically enabled by the language of the zoning ordinance, that they can apply for a conditional use approval from this group, the city council, for whatever that use may be. Then later, the, the last change we made was to section 53-481, and it was the conditions and limitations in the RS district, and we added a host of outdoor uses which are actually occurring all over the city now, without objection. Gasoline sales, plant nurseries and garden centers, outdoor dining, outdoor display of merchandise, all these things happen regularly in RS. And being a high-intensity, high-activity area, like RS is usually applied, we found them to be completely appropriate. So we added that list as well as live music performances, which again would be associated with outdoor dining or outdoor entertainment, and again, put in a clause that would allow for a conditional use approval by the city's, city council for any other uses which are not specifically enumerated. So that was the recommendation from staff that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission a week ago. Commissioner Paul Schidmeyer brought up an idea that just because live music is not amplified electronically does not mean that it's not particularly loud or can be intrusive. And his recommendation, which was then adopted by P&amp;Z in their motion to this board, was that the live music performance, portion I should say, that's added in these three, be moved to the conditional use approval, because it's not universally appropriate in every instance. So that was the, the recommendation. I believe, I believe it was a unanimous recommendation that went to you, but I could check on that before I, before I make that statement. No, five to one. It was five to one, and it was councilperson McCall who- Commissioner. Didn't, didn't find, or Commissioner McCall, who did not find it appropriate that it necessarily needed to be moved, and I believe she sided more with the staff recommendation as it was presented to P&amp;Z that night.
Okay. This item has a public hearing. We have a few folks that want to come and speak, so if there are no objections, I'm going to, I'm going to open up the public hearing. First up, Ms. Lila Knight. I see now that you wrote "public hearing" right across the top of it.
My name is Lila Knight, and I really don't have too much to say on this. I would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commissioners who took the concerns of the residents who live in CBD 1 and CBD 2 to heart, and I hope that you all will go along with their recommendation. I really hadn't even thought about what Commissioner Schidmeyer brought up, which was that a marching band is acoustical unamplified music. I don't know that we'd get a lot of that, but there's still that possibility, and it's amazing how sound can carry along a long strip like that. Also, drums are generally not always amplified. You could have a New York, I mean, not New Orleans-type jazz band. You know, there, there are types of music that fall within this definition, but which would be very loud. Secondly, I'd also like to ask you to consider the outdoor uses, which I'm in total support of outdoor dining and outdoor display and sale of merchandise, but I think that you should add those to neighborhood commercial, community commercial, and mixed use as well. And lastly, I'm glad to see that it's so easy to make amendments to CBD 1 and CBD 2, and I'm hoping that you'll review it again and take a look at whether residential uses should not be explicitly allowed as well. I, it is my interpretation of the ordinance that they are already in there, but I know that, you know, I'm not an attorney, so y'all could argue with me, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Knight. Next up, Ms. Evangelina Chapa.
Mayor, council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity. I just want to remind y'all that it was in March of last year that this was brought up as far as CBD 1, CBD 2, and one of the main concerns of, of a property on 800 block, which the zoning was trying to be changed, we were concerned. We had a petition signed and presented to the city, and it was 200 blocks around that area, I mean, 200 feet around that area, and that was only that area that we had signatures. And we were very concerned as far as the noise. That was one of the main things. As far as the ordinance, the eating, I have no problems with that. It's the noise that we, we were more concerned about. Also, the city had a meeting around the July, June or July, and this room got filled up with people from two blocks from Center Street to the right and to the left, and most of those people concerned was the noise from the railhouse, that we can hear it all the way. So I am still, just want to remind y'all that that's one of the main things that we were very much against. So I hope you make decisions and think of the citizens. I'm sure there's, there's going to be a time that there will be changes, but right now, I think that please think, be considerate of the residents that are there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa. Next up, Rebecca Chapa.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. My name is Rebecca Chapa, and I would like y'all to please reconsider, at least for this ordinance, the portion of the noise. I have no objection to an outside seating area. That would be very nice. Our little town is very pleasant to look at, but again, with the changes of CBD 1 and possible changes for rezoning for CBD 2, we still have a lot of residential people living in this, this area, especially south. A block south is what y'all consider, a block away from Center Street is what y'all consider CBD 1. South of here, there are still a lot of residential homes, and that could be a nuisance for them. Even with outside seating with people, people like to talk over each other louder and louder, so there could be a little bit of annoyance there, but with music, it definitely would be affecting them personally, and if they have children, so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Kate Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Kate Johnson. I serve as the chairman of the Hayes County Historical Commission, but also the president of Preservation Associates. I'm here tonight representing the Katherine M. Porter Literary Center as the owner of this historic house. First, I would like to thank the City of Kyle for all of your support in the past. On three occasions now, the city has generously supplied security support for important events, including two appearances by First Lady Laura- including two appearances by First Lady Laura Bush. We could not have had those special events without the city and the Kyle Police Department working with the Secret Service. The Katherine Anne Porter House is in the CBD 1 zoning district. I would like to support the recommendation of your Planning and Zoning Commission to allow outdoor dining and display of merchandise. But I agree with the commissioners that outdoor, unamplified, and acoustical music should be by conditional use permit only. We have several households near our center with small children who must get up early to attend school. We also have several elderly people living nearby. Unamplified music might seem like it would not disturb anyone. It actually can be a nuisance to these households. As you know, we hold readings by well-known authors six to seven times a year indoors. We had problems years ago with a restaurant next to us playing outdoor music on their patio. Although we tried to cooperate with them by giving them our schedule, the owner continued to play the music outdoors. The music did interfere with a video recording of the authors. If this type of outdoor music was looked at at a case-by-case basis, it would really help to identify any potential problems and allow the nearby property owners to be able to express their feelings. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, that's the last that I have registered to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed. Mr. Coons, do you have anything to add at this time?
Staff doesn't have any objection to moving the live music portion to conditional uses. I, I think the question boils down to the whether, not whether or not something's possible, but whether or not it's probable. You know, the marching band example, probably, not probable. But, you know, perhaps a mariachi band, that's likely, not just probable, but likely. And they can have quite a bit of volume. But consider that where currently we have existing uses is not enough because anywhere that CBD 1 and 2 are enabled in our downtown means that, you know, these restaurants or shops are permissible by right. So, eventually, it could be the case. So, it's just a question of how tight a control do you want? How many applications do you want being cycled through the city council for each additional use, for each new business that starts up in our downtown?
If they were made conditional, would they be going to directly to city council, or would they go directly to Planning and Zoning?
They'd come straight here.
Okay. And is there any thought towards what Ms. Knight said about neighborhood commercial and community commercial? Any particular reason why they weren't included in the amendments? Is it already, I don't know what the rule is there?
The direction was really centered on a locale, which was our downtown, which is comprised almost exclusively of CBD 1 and 2, with a few exceptions. And then the other part came from you, I believe, when, when we talked about the outdoor display of merchandise, as you thought about other uses elsewhere in the city.
I was just thinking about, we have several restaurants in our city that have outdoor seating in RS that were approved and set up and permitted exactly for those uses, like, well, I'm not going to mention them because up until this point, I guess it's technically not allowed, but which is obviously very appropriate in the RS zoning, so.
I don't recall that they're specifically precluded from the other districts, though. I'll have to find that language in CC where it says that you're not allowed to. I, I'm not sure that's the case.
CBD 1 and CBD 2 being less or more restrictive than neighborhood and community commercial, it seems like there's a gap. So, we went to the top, and then we're down here in these more restrictive zonings, looking at it. And then there's two, two in the middle, which is, in terms of consistency, I wouldn't want it to be a challenge for someone not realizing that the zoning doesn't allow for it, when if they actually had a less intense zoning than it potentially could be, even for something like outdoor display of, you know, outdoor seating or whatever. So, those are the only questions that I had or comments. I'll open it up for questions. Councilor Rosa.
I just got a quick question. So, I guess my definition of acoustic is a little different. Acoustic to me was guitars, you know, string instruments. Acoustic to me was never horns, was never drums or anything like that. What is, what is everybody's definition of acoustic? I really want to know what that is because for me, it's guitars, you know? That's what I think about, somebody out there with a guitar singing. Can they, under this definition, can they be out there with, with a trumpet, with drumsets, things like that, even though they're not amplified?
Correct. Yes. Well, the language is live acoustic music performances or similar entertainment. Because I was with you, I was like, what about percussion? We have all these other names and bands, and acoustic is one particular section.
And for me, being in the music background forever, acoustic, acoustic performance was always just someone out with a guitar. I mean, it was never anything else. And that, I was thinking that's where we're going with this, you know, it's what we wanted to see. We didn't want to see, you know, a full live band out there, you know, going, playing. And one reason is that the drumset would drown out the singer. There's no reason you'd want that out there, you know what I mean? Unless you muffle the drumset out. But is there a way we could, if the council would like to maybe amend that, you know, to, to, well, I see it as a definition of acoustic is a guitar performance, where someone's singing out there.
String instrument.
A string instrument. I mean, yeah, piano, something like that, something that's not going to be really loud, you know? Because we do have a noise ordinance, you know, so it's one of the things to think about. Is there a way to do that, or not really?
Do you believe that the piano is a stringed instrument or a percussion instrument?
The strings inside the piano.
It's a string.
It's a string, yeah.
How are the strings actuated in a piano?
I'm going to tell you, I can play my piano pretty loud.
Yeah, we're good. Our expectation was whether or not there was some type of amplification that came from electronic or, or other type devices. It doesn't just have to be electronic. But it was the difference between something that was an amplified performance versus something that just came from the qualities of the instrument itself. That's our expectation of what is acoustic.
And when this first came before us, I, my understanding was going to be just an acoustic show. And my, my thought process through this was, you know, guitar and somebody singing out there. And that's kind of, you know, I've seen that in many towns work, you know, I mean, where it's just somebody with a guitar and, you know. But even with that being said, you know, we, we don't want them playing late at night. So, I thought about even, you know, adding a use in there to stop about eight o'clock at night, you know, taking consideration, you know, the people who live around there, you know, because we still have, after that, we've got businesses that play music inside. But, you know, when you're at a restaurant, you know, the restaurants aren't going to be open all night. So, we could look at maybe the limitation of what time, you know, these performances would stop, maybe eight o'clock. I'd be amenable to changing that if someone had some other thoughts, but I don't think you need a clock in neighborhoods.
Councilor Sheil.
Right. I just Googled the definition for acoustic music, and it just says, "is music that solely or primarily uses instruments that produce sound through acoustic means as opposed to electronic or electronic means." Typically, the phrase refers to that made of acoustic string instruments. So, that is, you know, but it says it refers, you know, it doesn't say that is the definition. And the other thing is, some of us do eat late at night, and we like to sit out on the patio at nine or 10 o'clock at night. Just to let you know.
Did I just read that definition of, the definition of acoustic as an instrument that is acoustic?
It says typically, the phrase refers to that made by acoustic string instruments. Yes.
Not the clearest definition I've ever heard.
I know, but I'm just saying that's what Googled.
I liked the recommendation by P&amp;Z. I think it's a good recommendation. I'm still in favor of limiting how late we can have this acoustic show outside, apparently drums. Now, I'm thinking drums, I'm thinking even earlier. But I'd, I'd be okay with eight o'clock if council would like to go in that direction.
Or you can just put the music portion in the conditional use and condition their approval to certain limitations.
That's what actually was my next question. I had a couple more. And one was if somebody comes in, wants, has a, a use, you know, or a particular desire to play, is it all or nothing at that point? Or can you conditionally approve based on what they're proposing to make sure that, you know, what you're approving is what you are intending to get? Did that make any sense at all?
It did in roundabout ways.
I just thought I was really tired, but.
Saying, can you, can you restrict the conditional use to the proposal of the applicant? They're saying, we want to allow for someone to play guitar. Can you conditionally use the approval, conditionally approve the use of a guitar? Sorry, my words don't work so much.
The use would be approved, subject to conditions. That's conditional use. So, if somebody comes in and makes a request, you can approve it, subject to conditions. The conditions would be restrictions like time, whether or not something's amplified, how far away, or how close they're allowed to be to a property line.
Okay. So, my second question is, can this be a process that goes through Planning and Zoning Commission and can be appealed to council if desired by the applicant?
You would prefer P&amp;Z were the deciding board? And if the applicant were aggrieved, it could be?
That would be my preference, but that's just, that's just my thought on it. I'm, I'm not overly interested in hearing those cases. We have a very capable P&amp;Z board, and if the, if there was ever a problem there where they weren't able to all work it out, then there would be a process to appeal to council. There already is.
But I think we would need to, you know, outline some guidance a little bit, you know, because what their thoughts might be, might be completely different than what we're thinking here.
So, can I ask a question?
Councilor Sheil.
So, what I'm summarizing here is we've got several things going on. We're okay with the, with the conditional usage, but we want the decisions made by P&amp;Z.
Just my thoughts.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to-
We, we have, we have big agendas every single time.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying, well, I'm off every four, so it's not a mission for me.
I'm not looking to stay extra late, you know.
So, I'm, I'm just trying to summarize this so I can get my, my head, my head around all of this. So, okay, so we're going to do, or we're suggesting conditional usage with P&amp;Z being able to make, make the connection. Councilor Berizzo wants to limit it to eight o'clock, and we want to allow the P&amp;Z to determine what type of instruments can be played?
Just the manner of the conditional use.
Okay, just the manner of the conditional use. So, any type of acoustical equipment could be utilized still, correct? And I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything that I'm hearing from everybody. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes.
So, those are the three points.
I'm not sure about that eight o'clock as a, as a part of this, but that would be something that P&amp;Z could restrict based on.
Well, and I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to summarize the points that I'm hearing.
Right, right.
That's, I'm not saying that that's going to be the, the plan. I just want to make sure I'm understanding everything. Am I missing anything else? So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Tenoy.
I'd like to make a motion with some changes to the ordinance. Okay. So, I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to say the changes that I'd like to have made. Ready? Okay. I'd like to move to approve an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, amending section 53-4119, conditions and limitations, section 53-444, conditions and limitations, and section 53-53-481, conditions and limitations of chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle Code of Ordinance by adding limited outdoor uses, providing for future outdoor uses, and requiring certain buffers between land uses, with the exception of making everything conditional and giving the power-
Everything or just the-
All acoustical music, rather.
The music section.
Conditional. And the conditional approval will be given by P&amp;Z. And the council will come up with some type of a, a way for a petitioner to appeal. And that is my motion.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Tenoy, second, and by the mayor. I'm going to try to repeat it as well, that we approve as written, accepting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to strike the, the section related to music. That we make that conditional use, make that a conditional use in those zoning categories, and that Planning and Zoning would be the body that hears it and finally passes. If the applicant wishes to appeal, the appellate body would be the city council. Is that clear? Does that sound appropriate? I'd like to offer an amendment that adds to, and that we, we actually may not be able to. I wanted to add neighborhood commercial, community commercial to make it consistent. We can't do that in this hearing.
Have to go back through full, full cycle.
All right. I take that back.
But I can, we can start that now if that's your direction.
It seems consistent because RS is more intense and CBD 1 and 2 is less intense, so, than those. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I still, I still think that there's, there could be a compromise with the limitation of the hours. I know the recommendation was eight o'clock, but I think there still needs to be some discussion with regards to that, because if we don't, you know, 10 o'clock leads into a little bit longer than that every single time. So, I think, especially during the week, that's going to be a critical issue for some people that still live in the downtown area that do have small children, that do need to be prepared for the next day. And although we know that most of our revitalization is going to be downtown, which we mean the close center, when we're, when we're thinking about this, I just think that we, we need to come up with a compromise of cutting it out just in case, you know, we have another development that comes in closer to the residential area so that we're limiting the length that they're playing. I would imagine that's probably going to be pretty viable here for the next good bit of time as well. So, can we do, can we center that around certain locations? I think that's the part of the revitalization that we need to start determining what our zones are-
Right.
-within the, within the original downtown, and then as it gets further out, that those, those time zones come up to limit what we're doing into the neighborhoods.
That's what my response is going to be. I'm not opposed to that, but we have three different zonings. And my, my thinking is that RS hours should be different than CBD 1 versus CBD 2, you know? So, the, in particular, the, in which is it? Two is down there here, or one? I've already forgotten which way. This is two, that's one. So, CBD 1 would be where you want the more restrictive hours, and then allow for maybe a little later here, and then RS even later. I'm not prepared to think through that right now, but we, we can if we want, or we can bring, bring that back at any point in time.
Or how it dovetails into the noise ordinance-
Right.
-that we already have.
Let's, let's bring that back. I'm pretty sure this council is going to bring that back. So, we've demonstrated that we will bring things back and fix them, so.
Definitely bring back the revisions.
Yes, absolutely.
Definitely.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection?
Because we're going to make changes to this and bring it back for y'all to look at it again, so I would prefer it go to second reading.
Okay, well, then I'll object. We'll bring it back. Thank you. All right, next up, agenda item number 26, first reading and ordinance of the city of Kyle, amending section 53-930, section 53-933, and 934, adding neighborhood design, garage requirements and design. Mr. Coons.
Direction from the mayor and council at the November meeting was also to take a look at the, we've termed the residential style guide. Additionally, how the actions of the Texas House, specifically Bill HB 2439, affects the provisions in our style guide. I'll start first with 53, 933, which is the, the beginning of the residential style guide. We, we've made a couple of revisions which are chronicled in your staff report, and it started with, I'm just going to go through them in order. One of the ways that we were charged with increasing the standard for beauty and quality of life in our residential one and two-family neighborhoods was to compel street-side plantings rather than suggest there be street plantings. Personally, as an arborist now for over a decade, my expectation is that communities are nicer. They look better, and they're more desirable. And there's a host of other reasons why trees are beneficial to all of us. They, they function at a higher standard if street trees are required. So, our expectation is that there would be deciduous overstory trees planted no less than 50 feet on center along public rights-of-way in subdivisions as they come forward from this point forward. Additionally, we found that the easements for underground utilities should be dual use. So, if you have something that's underground, there's typically a clear space that's above where there's no permanent improvements are made, with the occasional exception for flatwork, which would be like concrete or asphalt. But what we'd like to see is that the developer would be able to put a trail network through. And the, the reason for that is the underground utility- and the, the reason for that is the underground utilities typically traverse more than just one subdivision, and they usually link them, so it would be an excellent idea to have an off-highway trail, that would be non-vehicular trail, that could take advantage of these open spaces and link them for passive recreation, and in some instances where there is a destination that they can be used as a transportation network. Then the later changes came along, our, the next change that we talked about was the idea of garages, and how a home is accessed, basically, with a, with a vehicle, how, how a lot and the home itself is accessed. First key change is not the first one in the, in the line, but the, the key change is that we changed the idea from garage, from lots, I should say, being front-loaded, and instead talk about the lot being front-facing, because you can have a lot that takes street access from the front property line, which means front-loaded, but not necessarily have the garage doors front-facing. Means you could either have a side-facing garage and still take access from the front of the lot, or, in the example that we've put forward with the development of the second phase of Plum Creek, Lennar has agreed to the idea of a design standard that places a accessory detached garage in a rear yard. That can still be front-facing, but because it's not attached to the structure, it's much more traditional design that you would find throughout the Midwest and other industrialized areas in the turn of the previous century, right up through post-war construction. So we, we changed the, the requirements for front-facing attached garages, and would no longer permit them in one or two-family districts. Sounds a little heavy-handed, but when we went through the terms of the way that homes were sited on these lots, it's the next step, rather than trying to find a way to creatively camouflage a home, and the idea that it's actually, homes are turning into just places where you store your cars, and you have a dorm in the back where you occasionally sleep before you use it the next time. There should be more creative architecture that capitalizes on the idea of placing the garage, or carriage house, or whatever you'd like to refer to it, somewhere other than front and center of your lot. Additionally, right now, the requirement is for accessing lots in one and two-family subdivisions is that alley loading was only required for lots less than fifty feet in width. We have very few, if any, home, one and two-family homes that are being platted on lots that are less than fifty feet. Our new and most popular single-family detached zoning district is R-one-three, which is fifty feet and larger, where the idea of alley loading was a strong suggestion, but not a mandate. This change creates the requirement that lots that are less than sixty-five feet in width, which means all of our one and two-family homes that would be platted in a zoning district that's not R-one-two, R-one-one, or urban state, which are all larger than sixty-five feet, all of our other one and two-family lots are enabled on lots of less than sixty-five feet. So the expectation is that if you build a lot that is less than sixty-five feet, it should take access from an alley. That is the, the next step in the way that this works. And then we took out some conflicting provisions that were passed in twenty-seventeen, which was ordinance nine-twenty-eight, which is a cumbersome and confusing and longstanding fuel for arguments with folks that come in that can't necessarily understand the nuances of the language that's contained in nine-twenty-eight. It's difficult to administer, it's difficult to explain to people, and we found that the residential style guide is much easier, because it's got illustrations and the language is a lot plainer, so we'd rather just use the language that's in the residential style guide to talk about the enclosed garages and what's allowed and what's not allowed. That is the portion of the text change that relates to neighborhood design. Moving forward, we've made a couple of minor changes to the portion of the residential style guide that relates to the structure itself, and they're all related to garages and the architectural dominance of garage doors. It's now a mandate that they, front-facing home architecture shall not allow front-facing garage doors on one and two-family homes. And then the, the second part of the request from the mayor and council in November was to make sure that the terms of our residential style guide are in compliance with House Bill twenty-four thirty-nine. I consulted with the Texas chapter of the American Planning Association, and I talked with a couple of attorneys at the state conference that was in Waco back in November. Their recommendation was, if you have language that restricts materials in your ordinance, to ignore it, to leave it, for a couple of reasons. The main reason, though, is that the House Bill two-four-three-nine is a true preemption bill. There is nothing about a local ordinance that regulates these materials, by and large, that is enforceable. So effectively, the language is superfluous as soon as the bill became law. However, there are a couple of instances where it's still appropriate. One, historic instances of where the language was appropriate, you would want to be able to refer back to that, because it doesn't affect anything that, moving forward, it only affects, or at least can be used as a reference for projects that were built when it was enforced and effective. There may be, hopefully, fingers crossed, a day when House Bill twenty-four thirty-nine would be repealed, or partially or entirely. If that were the case, then the language that we have in there would already be in place and enforceable again, and for the sake of continuity with the development patterns in the past, you would be able to carry that forward. So as a, as a historical record, as hopefully something that'll be able to be used in the future, and finally, in the instance where you make separate development agreements with folks that want to come forward and build products, you can reference that language that's still in your code in private agreements that are between the city and those actors, and they can use that as a reference and find it. So we, we, we found that the, right now, the best idea, because there's no harm to the city, and there's no expectation of further enforcement, is just to leave the language.
Okay, this item has a public hearing, so if there are no objections, I'm gonna open up that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this item?
Good evening, from Bakachapa. I just have a few questions regarding this. This is only for new development, not for current, and, and taking consideration on the landscaping with the trees and stuff, these trees, these will not be, have the developers indicated that the positioning of them, that they're not destroying any sidewalks or anything as, as we've had in other subdivisions, where they, yes, the trees were needed or wanted, but they had, they were either too close to the sidewalks, that they uprooted a lot of the, the sidewalks that were there, and who will be in charge of those maintenance? Would the city, taking away our workers from, to correct those or repair them, as they've already done before? So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this item?
Evening, my name's Gerald Voss, and I'm not totally against the garage requirement, but I do believe that there should be some type of compromise. Where I come from, we like our garages attached, you pull your car in there to get your groceries out and not have to be outside in the rain and the snow. We live in a neighborhood where our houses, excuse me, our garages are facing the street, and a lot of the new neighbors that we get that come in say the reason they didn't go to Plum Creek is because they want their garages attached, and they want them facing the front. Also, looking at real estate, dabbling in real estate, looking at some of the numbers, I feel that the houses in Plum Creek, because they have the garages in the back and they're alley-accessed, that those houses usually stay on the market for a few days longer than other neighborhoods where the garages are facing the street. So my opinion, and I think we should come up with a compromise, or something where people moving into Kyle have a choice, not all subdivisions be detached garages in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, it's now closed. Anything to add?
I do, we, I failed to mention that the, the recommendation from the P and Z, they agreed with the, the bulk of the recommendations, and, and sought to recommend it five to one. The dissenting vote was Commissioner Voss, who objected to the, the garage language, and sought instead for there to be no restriction with forward-facing garages. The, the language we have here does not preclude attached garages. You can still have a side-facing garage, if the garage is in the front of the home, if it's truly side-loading, which is the side of the house, which you're familiar with the Tudor style, where you come into, if the lot's wide enough, or you can put an attached garage in the rear of the home, rather than having it on the front, so you would pull past the house, and then most typically side-loaded, although my home has a rear-facing garage, which is not side-loaded, so you have to do a U-turn to get in and a U-turn to get out, but my lot's wide enough that I can do that. So the, the idea of attached garages is still allowable, it's just not attached forward-facing garages.
Okay, I actually have a, a question on that particular point. Section fifty-three nine-thirty-three B says alley-loading is required for all homes on lots less than sixty-five feet in width. Cul-de-sacs notwithstanding, seems to me that means any lot less than sixty-five feet can't be rear-detached or side-loading. Am I, am I wrong in that?
Because of the, the, the lot width, yeah, you're gonna be very restricted. We still believe that there's a means that you can pull past a home, and then access the, the, the rear of it, but the, if you're alley-loading, then you're pretty much gonna take out the idea of a forward-facing garage anyway, because there's no vehicle access from the, from the front of the lot if you're taking access from the rear.
Right.
You don't have to take access from that alley necessarily if you're alley-loaded. Most alley-loaded lots end up being through lots, meaning they have right-of-way in the front and the rear, so the text of the language is, is still, is still accurate, you still have to have the garages in the rear.
Okay, but I guess my question is, if you had a sixty-five-foot lot, or somewhere between fifty and sixty-five, and you wanted rear-detached, this seems to tell me that you couldn't do that. In other words, one street front, it doesn't have to be an alley-loaded, as long, so long as, we've, we've approved R-one-three with a, with rear-detached in the past components, it seems to me this wouldn't allow for that, unless I'm mistaken. It says alley-loading is required for all homes on lots less than sixty-five feet.
Correct.
I think my preference would be alley-loaded, side-loaded, or rear-detached is required for all lots less than sixty-five feet, to be more consistent with, you know, my, my impression of what.
I think just what you would have is, if the home is alley-loaded, whether required or voluntary, there would not be a curb cut on the front property line. So it, it says alley-loading would be required, so at that point, you wouldn't have a forward-facing garage, you could still side-load a home that has an attached garage by taking access from an alley. You would just enter the lot from the rear instead of the front, and then come into the side of the house. Or you could have an attached garage on the back of the home, because you're coming in from the alley anyway, so your driveway and parking pad would be shorter, or you could have that detached structure that's way up next to the alley, where you'd effectively have no driveway, because you pull out of the alley right into your garage.
Okay, all right, I understand the difference. Questions, comments? Councilor Berizzo.
My question is affordability. When we start changing, making these changes, are, are the prices of homes changing now? So we're thinking about the affordability, being affordable home, make sure we're not outsourcing a certain part of our society, that they can afford to buy something in Kyle. Would the front-loaded garage be a diff, big difference in price to the side-loaded?
I, I don't. So yes, it's complicated, probably more than I can explain in fifteen seconds, but typically a side-loaded home, if, if the garage is not forward of the living quarters, if, if it's not that way, if it's in line, you're gonna need a wider lot. There's just no way around it. If you've got a sixty-foot-wide lot, and you've got a forty-two-wide house, you've got eighteen feet of setback left. You might be able to swing that over far enough that you can get in to the side, but it's, effectively, it's gonna be tight. So the expectation would be narrow lot development, and having no ability of forward-facing garage is going to necessitate either the garage comes forward of the front facade of the house, and then you side-load, which is sort of like an L-shaped house with the garage still attached but in the front, and creates like a little vehicular courtyard as your front yard, where you just sort of pull in the driveway and immediately make a ninety and pull in the garage. That's one option. Side-loading, true side-loading on the side of the home's probably not an option, because the lot's gonna be too narrow, but there's still plenty of room and no setback restrictions for your driveway. Your driveway can go right up to the property line, or in traditional neighborhood design, what you ended up getting was two homes end up sharing a single driveway. They go up between the two houses, and when you get to the back, they split, and then the other side of the home has no driveway, nor does it share anything with its neighbor, because their driveway is effectively two property lines over. So you cut down on the amount of impervious surface by everybody sharing those. Then when you get to the rear, you've got two options, either attached or detached. If it's attached, it's more likely gonna be side-loaded and attached, so as you pull past the house, you make the left, and then you turn in, or as the case may be, you make the right, and then pull into the garage that way. Or you have a detached structure that's further back away from the home, and you can pull straight into it, whether or not you have a parking pad back there to turn around, or if you back out both. The house my father grew up in, my grandmother's home, was designed that way. Their, their house was nearer the front of the lot, there was a driveway that went along the left side, which they shared with their neighbor, and their garage was up the hill a little bit and behind, which they turned right to get into. They could back up using the neighbor's portion of the shared driveway, and then they were able to pull out of their lot forward onto the street. That's the expectation of design moving forward, not to have garage-dominated architecture as you go down the block. And if your lot is sixty-five feet or, or less, or I should say, if it's less than sixty-five feet, you wouldn't have any reason necessarily to know that those were just homes that are built to accessorize a garage versus the, the traditional architecture type, which would be to, to not necessarily be garage-dominated.
I'm just, I'm just worried about the affordability, like.
The two, the two biggest drivers for that would be the, the size of the lots that would be required if you truly wanted to have side-loading instead of forward-loading. You're gonna have to look at the width of the product that's being constructed on the lot, and then the width of the lot, as it fits on there to make the, the dynamics work. And then second is the addition of the pavement of that alley. The opportunity cost is the overall lower density, because there's a lot of room that's being consumed for that right-of-way, even if it's private or public, the shared rights-of-way for the folks to use that alley. And then the idea that the, the wider the lots, the fewer the lots that you're gonna place on the overall development. I don't think necessarily that there's a huge price difference if you take a home, you're going to have a garage, it's going to have a sixteen-foot-wide door, and it's gonna comprise somewhere in the neighborhood of four-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-and-eighty square feet. Whether the roll-up garage door is on the back of it, the side of it, or the front of it, the cost should effectively be the same for, in, in that respect alone.
Howard, so just in describing what you're trying to, some homes in Amberwood are L homes with side-entry garages, correct? Those are, and what size are those lots?
I don't know specifically of those lots.
There's a couple of them over there, just, yeah.
I'm, I'm familiar with that, how big are the lots? I mean, the expectation for being able to make a turn, a ninety-degree turn in an automobile would be from twenty-two feet of space. Twenty-four would be nicer, but you can do it in twenty-two. It's tight, you're not gonna do it in a full-size pickup truck, but in most import automobiles.
It's an L when you come in.
Right, so the, the depth of the garage is gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-two feet.
Sure.
When you turn in. That gives you a little bit of buffer room front and back, and you can put the door down, so that's about twenty-two feet, and then you're gonna want at least another twenty-two or twenty-four behind that to jockey in and out of that. So you're looking in, at, at a minimum, probably forty-six, forty-seven feet from here to here. Not necessarily yet taking into account the idea of the setbacks that would be required. Narrow lots have narrow setbacks, so I think that's primarily why the sweet spot for development, at least in the last couple of years that I've been in Kyle, has been forty-seven feet, forty-seven or bigger, because of the, the setbacks and then the width of the home. Now, those are basically on front-loaded, so if you use that L shape like you're talking about, I think you could probably do that on, I think you can make that work on a fifty-foot lot.
Councilor Sheel.
Okay, first of all, I've lived in all, I mean, all three kind of situations, but... But in an R-13 home, when you're putting alleys in, the builder is going to charge more for those homes because now he's lost land on all those alleys and he can't put in as many homes. But so I'm kind of, I mean, I loved, you know, I love alleys. And I would have bought in Plum Creek if they weren't all detached when I was looking because I like to be able to go out to my garage in my pajamas and not have to put on a coat if I have to. But I guess my concern is that, first of all, the homes, I mean, they're just going to try instead of, if it's 65 or less and they have to have an alley, all they're going to do is make them 50-foot width so they can get more homes in because they're losing the land that they're, you know, to the alleyway. So I'm concerned about that. Or they're going to increase the price because they're losing land to the alley.
You believe alley lots require wider lots? Lots that are...
Instead of a 65-foot-wide lot, they'd want to go to a 50 and make them more narrow because they're losing, they want to put in as many homes as they can because they're losing land to the alley.
They're already doing that, though. They're already requesting 50 foot. Whatever the absolute densest that they can put in.
Professionally and personally, there's nothing wrong with a 50-foot lot. The density can be acceptable. It really just becomes a function of design and installation and then pride of ownership moving forward. A 50-foot-wide lot of which there's probably plenty of that in the nicer neighborhoods, not just in Kyle, but in all of suburban Austin. You can find smaller lots that are high-quality. But you can build a home to nearly any price point that's required simply from the accoutrements that are in the home, the size of the home itself. There's a number of things that go into it. The question here becomes, are you listening to the affordability argument from the development community? Or are we interested in changing the aesthetic of the built environment in Kyle? Because I hear the development community and they talk about how they're drilling down and trying to sell these homes for the least amount of money that they can in an altruistic effort. Yet on the same time, they're probably trying to sell those homes for as much as they can because they have to feed their families as well. So it's a curious argument I've had, but...
So, but R-12 and R-11 were still restricting.
Those are so wide.
Right. But we're still saying no front-loading garages on those as well, correct?
One in two family homes. When we looked at the style guide and the directive from the council in November, it was tighten up and elevate the terms of the residential style guide. Rather than talking about muted colors like beige and darker browns and hinge straps and lights and how you can conceal the fact that you've got an 18-foot-wide two-car garage facing every street. I mean, there's only so much you can do to conceal a garage before you just have to not have it anymore. So we said, well, what if they weren't allowed? What would be the alternative? And the alternative would be side-facing and yet still forward-loading for one and two family homes. Doesn't necessarily work with townhome product, but you can have garages on the lowest level of the townhome. They end up being walk-up townhomes. And necessarily, there are some architecture types, prevalent architecture, especially in four-plexes, where they end up building them like the letter H and then each of the legs is a garage and then the homes themselves are attached in the center. So we found it appropriate for one and two family homes.
I'm going to think about that a little more. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a couple more comments and thoughts. That's okay. So one is a question related to homes that would back up to, for example, a green belt or another type of use or not necessarily be connected to another subdivision. The, one of the affordability arguments that's compelling to me is when an alley is not able to be shared by an adjoining property as being, meaning that the entirety of that alley has to be absorbed or the cost of that pavement has to be absorbed by the single home as opposed to a shared alley. Is your understanding of this is that the, no matter where, even if they backed up to a green belt, that back green belt would have to be an alley if the lots are 65 and below here, correct?
Unless the expectation of that land owned by a separate actor constitutes a hardship and they could get a variance. And because this is in the zoning ordinance, it would be a variance, not a waiver. So they would need a variance from the Board of Appeals that states that it's too expensive to do it all by themselves.
Okay. I do believe that there is a certain degree of affordability argument that makes sense from what Councilor Roseau and Councilor Shiel said. That being said, my experience has been that, you know, as long as I've been here, the development community has, as Howard mentioned, they have constantly tried to build the cheapest, the densest, you know, and every single thing that they generally, I'm not speaking of all categorically, but I am speaking of the sentiment that I've felt with the overwhelming majority of the developers that have come to the city of Kyle has been that they, the standards that they build to are whatever we set as our bare minimum. If we say May, they say they don't read it. They just move right on unless we force them. So the reason they build to 50 feet is because that's what we set as basically the minimum that we will allow. They would build, the reason the streets are as wide as they are is because we changed rules that make the streets be a certain width or it has to be one-sided parking or something along those lines. The reason that they have to build with multiple articulations, which is an affordability, you know, structure as opposed to a box, is because we require that they do so. And so, and my question, you know, is, you know, where do we draw the line? Or what are we trying to achieve? And that's really where the style guide came into existence, was saying this is the way that we want neighborhoods to be designed because by setting these standards, it allows for a higher quality of overall development. That being said, I'm not even sure that requiring 100% of lots 65 feet and below is necessarily the best version of this. That might almost be going too far because I do think there are scenarios where a good product mixture of front-facing garages and alley-loaded products makes a lot of sense because it forces the developer to design their subdivision considering lots of different factors. So I will say that I'm obviously going to be on the side of wanting the most alley within that, whatever that product mixture might be because I think alley-loaded, rear-loading product forces developers to build more traditional neighborhood design focused on walkability. The, we have a lot of subdivisions. Before we put our residential style guide in place, they have very short driveways. And yes, they have a sidewalk that goes in the front, but they have cars parked on the street, cars parked in the driveway, multiple cars parked on the driveway that blocks the sidewalk and it looks like a parking lot. And you're not even able to walk in the sidewalk that we, you know, because of how many vehicles there are, you're having to walk right up behind a vehicle or you can't always see what's happening. The alley is, from a quality of life standpoint, even if it's rear-entry so that you can still get right out, walk right into your kitchen, is a much better design from a quality of life standpoint, in my opinion. But I would be, you know, I would be open to, you know, a percentage within, you know, any lots that are 65 feet and below within a particular plan to give that developer some flexibility. I don't know that the HBA is aware of this particular rule yet that we are proposing. I can't imagine that they would be very happy about it because they build on price and profit. And this is about, it's really, it's not even, we're not saying you can't make more or less. We're not really even making a determination of that. But what we are saying is that we're making a rule that's not based on price and profit but on quality of life. So I am interested in increasing the quality of life and increasing the standards for our residential subdivisions. And I think that one of the best ways we can do it is through not allowing snout houses row after row after row and, you know, forcing some articulation, forcing some variation in the type of homes that get put into a subdivision. Those are my thoughts. Councilor Tenoria.
So I'm going to tell you that the idea of the quality of my life here in Kyle being based on if my garage is front-facing, side-facing, behind the house, in the neighbor's yard, is silly. The quality of life of the city of Kyle is what we're doing with our parks, what we're doing with bringing in employment, what we're doing with making sure that we have things for our families to do. That's the most important thing to me. I will say I live in a home that has the garage front-facing. Thanks to that, I have a 400-square-foot bedroom. Works for me. Having different product out there for people to choose is important.
I agree.
And, you know, I get it. I go to Plum Creek, people want to buy their house, that's great for them. That works for them. But having product for every family to choose from is just as important as whether or not the garage is in the back, the garage is in the side, the garage is on, wherever you want to put it. But that, to me, does not signify quality of life. So I'm, I think at some point, looking at, trying to be so fixated on where a garage is and trying to dictate to people who are, I mean, whether or not you like the housing developers, they're here to help us create our city, to bring people into our city. And I think that, I mean, I'm tired of hearing about a garage on the side of the house. I'm tired of hearing about a garage on... I don't understand what the fixation is on a garage. I really don't. And maybe, maybe I'm just like the lone person out here and everybody else can see that. I can't. And I think that this council has so much work to do that being stuck on a garage requirement just doesn't seem to be the right thing to be worrying and focusing on. And, I mean, y'all have the votes and that's totally cool. And to be perfectly, I'm not selling my house. My house, I've been there for 20 years. I'm comfortable there. But I really think that fixating on these very specific requirements are just too much. I mean, let's talk about how we're going to pay for things that we have to pay for. Let's talk about the things that we need to plan for the future with. A garage, I don't even know what to say. I'm just, I'm done with garages. If this is what you want, let's do it. Let's just move on. But I'm tired of talking about a garage. That's it.
Councilor Shiel.
To a certain degree, I agree with Councilmember Tenoria. As I said, I've lived in all three types and I'm good with all three types except for detached. But that's me. I don't mind the idea of having, you know, maybe a portion, you know, a percentage, as Mayor said, because that also allows for a non-cookie cutter neighborhood instead of, you know, every house looking exactly the same. I know we took out the whole idea of snot-nose garages.
Henceforth and forevermore, they shall be called snot-noses.
Whatever.
Snot-noses.
Snot-noses, snot-noses, whatever. I know that. But maybe, you know, if we do have a front-facing garage and we want the neighborhoods to look nicer, maybe we should say, you know, decorative garage doors, you know, versus just, you know, the plain two-car, you know, if we're trying to make houses look nicer. But I don't, again, I, I have a front-loading garage. I'm fine with it. It works great for me. I've lived in one that had an alley all of my childhood and I had no problem with that. So I think having maybe a percentage works just because it does just change up the character of the neighborhood in general. And that's it.
So Howard, how do we build in the parity for that? How do we do that? How do we balance that? That way into the ordinance? That way we can just get through this? How do we do it?
Split it by percentage. Decide for yourself what percentage is allowed to be forward-facing or you do it spatially, meaning the perimeter of a project is allowed to have front-loading because then you don't have an alley on the...
Would you like to bring back some suggestions for us? And we don't have a terrible hurry on this particular ordinance.
Sure, I could.
Thank you. Just some options.
If anybody has any options for us or suggestions for us, if they would forward it to me through the city manager, that'd be great. You know, because I'd rather than chase this...
We'll take it back up, it's just 11 and we still have some other items to deal with, folks that are here. So I think that's, you know, as far as signaling. Councilor Ellison, sorry.
No, I actually appreciate the discussion on this item. I'm not sure what votes have been counted or assumed that there are votes on this. But I think it is a very good discussion to have. I watched, I attended a P&amp;Z meeting about this and, you know, there was some, there was a dissenting argument. And I think that that provided a particular portion of the populace that does not necessarily want, you know, no front-facing garages to be going forward. So I think it is good that we had this discussion. I get maybe it's late and some of us are restless and want to move to a different topic. But I would be in favor. I actually was, I was happy to hear the discussion go the way it went. I would be in favor of there being a percentage. I'm not in favor of totally getting rid of all front-facing garages for future development. That's where I stand on that. So I'm, you know, at the end of the day, that's what we're supposed to do, is talk about things, no matter if we feel like they're important to quality of life or not. I think this is something that is of interest because I agree with the Mayor's comments. Whatever we set the bar as, that will be what developers will bring to us. And I think we need to be cognizant of that. That's all I have to say.
The only reason I was suggesting to have Howard look at it and bring it back is because I'm not sure I'm, I haven't thought about, I don't want to, I don't want to propose an arbitrary number without having some time to really think through now that we've kind of had the opportunity to have this discussion, you know, to have Howard look at it and do a little research and maybe figure out something that, you know, we're all looking for to try to build that consensus. And I just don't know that I'm prepared to be able to do that right now. That was my only thinking, so.
I would like to make note, Mr. Mayor. This is not our first conversation about the garages. We've been talking about that quite frequently. So I agree that there needs to be some type of a percentage. You know, when you actually invest in your home and you buy your home and you choose your home, you have that option to pick anywhere in the city of Kyle and you could pick your house and build your house the way you want it. But I don't certainly want to not have that option for people.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, Councilor Koch.
Can we bring back cul-de-sacs? No, okay, never mind.
I love cul-de-sacs. I love them.
Howard, thank you for working on this. And I know you're going to do your due diligence on this and I look forward to whatever you bring back. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until our next regularly scheduled meeting and direct staff to work on a few options for, and rationales for percentages that they... and direct staff to work on a few options for and rationales for percentages that they might bring back related to this ordinance and alley-loaded.
Two weeks is enough time? Truce? I don't know. I mean, I'll make it happen if it needs to be. I can't, I'm not sure.
All right, well, hang on, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none, there is motions, motion fails for lack of second. So, I'd like to direct staff, make a motion to postpone this item until such a time as staff is prepared to bring it back and give them direction to, when they bring it back, bring it back with some percentages and options for us to consider as per my previous remarks. All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, city manager's report.
Council two items. First, list on the agenda, the Youth Advisory Council is February 1st and 2nd coming up quickly. You will have a link tomorrow for the signup genius if you are available. I know a couple of you have already looked at that. And then the other item that I sent you a little earlier, the newsletter of the council or not, the Kyle Chamber of Commerce Gala, which is February 1st from 6 till 10. Please let me know if you and a plus-one would like to attend that and we can get you registered. Thank you.
Which one is the government portion, Evo on the first?
It's at the same time. So, yes, the Chamber Gala and the kayak Evo activity are same time.
Might you come over so I can see the matter?
Great.
All right. Next up, we do have one more item. Thank you, Mr. Braun, for waiting. Executive session, Councilor Shiel.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including in error all of the following topics, pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, Kinder Morgan lawsuit update.
Second. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries. There is no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. Recognize a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Tenoria.
I'd like to make a motion to bring forth an item to join the Kinder Morgan lawsuit and...
As discussed.
As discussed in executive session.
Second. All right, it's been motion by Councilor Tenoria, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos. Is there any further discussion?
February, it'll be discussed and voted on on February 4th.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Oh.
Yeah. Councilor Tenoria.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
[applause]